Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming today for our special meeting. Hope everyone is doing well, dealing with the heat like everyone else. Just like a regular meeting, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Al Romella, and we will have an opening prayer by Attorney Rapier, Mr. Romella. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Romel- Mr. Al.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I might want to add one thing, Greg, if I can.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, two things, really. Everybody knows today is Flag Day, 1777. It was authorized, the flag the way it is today. And also, in 1954, President Eisenhower added the phrase "under God." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Al. Attorney Rapier, please.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for another day. As we come together today to do the business of our great city, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Bless and guide our elected officials as they strive to make the best decisions for our great city. Instill in all of us the desire to put the needs of the city of Kenner and its residents first. We ask all of this in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Attorney. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. You have a quorum. Under the Public Apairance Agenda, we have Item 19, Unfinished Business and Our Motions to Reconsider Are Removed from the Tabled Position. Item 19, at the request of Councilmember Carroll, the reconsideration of Ordinance Number 11,864, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, adopted by the Kenner City Council on June 3, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
You're voting on the reconsideration. Councilman Segura? Councilman Hayes?
Council Chair?
Yes, hold on a second. Yes, sir.
Are you just going straight to a... Are you going straight to a vote, no public comment?
Yeah, after, after we put it on the floor, then we'll, we'll have a public comment.
You're just voting to put it on the floor, or you're voting for adoption?
Just reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
But you're, the way you worded it, Council Clerk, is you're, they're voting to vote for reconsideration. Are they voting to put the reconsideration on the floor?
Yes, you're voting to put the ordinance back out there. You're reconsidering it. You reconsider it, then I will read it into the record, and then it will be on the floor for discussion.
Got you.
Question is the ord- is the budget, not the reconsideration.
Right.
All right, we'd like to be heard on the reconsideration itself.
Okay, we're voting to put it on the floor.
That's fine.
No, you're voting to reconsider.
Reconsider.
She's cleared it up. It's not the way, it's not the way it was said originally, but she's voting to put it on the floor.
Council President?
Yes.
I believe that the motion to reconsider is non-debatable. It's a non-debatable motion. So you make the motion, you second it, and you vote.
That is inaccurate. It is debatable solely on the purpose of the reconsideration. So that is the only topic of reconsideration and a motion to reconsider, is the subject matter the reason for the reconsideration?
So, we are, we have put it on the floor.
Upon motion so made and seconded, a vote shall be taken without debate. It is in the council rules. It's Rule 33.1. I appreciate Ms. Foshee's legal opinion, but she's incorrect.
Does the council here care to hear what will happen once you make that motion, the consequences of making that motion?
Of, of what motion?
Reconsideration.
Without, without comment?
We, we are going to have comments.
Okay, well, the city attorney is saying they're not going to have comments, so I'm just trying to...
I'm just reading the rule, Mayor.
That's fine.
Yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have comments.
Let's, I appreciate the rules, but I also appreciate what's best for the city of Kenner and its residents. So, I, I think we're saying the same thing, and once again, Councilman Carroll, that we're going to have a discussion on it.
Yes, we are going to have a discussion.
Thank you, sir.
So, we're putting it on the floor. Motion to put it on the floor. Councilmembers, please vote. For a discussion, for a discussion.
Well, your vote, your vote right now is you're voting to reconsider the ordinance right now.
Right, reconsider the ordinance.
Yes, sir, to put it back on the floor.
Yes. Council, councilmembers, please vote to put it, to re- for the reconsideration, please vote.
Councilman Segura? Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0 to reconsider the ordinance.
So now, we are open for a discussion?
No, I, I need to read the re- the item into the record.
Okay, go ahead.
Under the Public Apairance Agenda, we have Item 19, Unfinished Business and Our Motions to Reconsider Are Removed from the Tabled Position. Item 19A, at the request of Councilmember Carroll, the recon- the reconsideration of Ordinance Number 11,864, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, adopted by the Kenner City Council on June 3, 2021. Now, the ordinance is on the floor for a public hearing.
So, the ordinance is on the floor for a public hearing. The budget ordinance.
We are on the ordinance now.
We are on the ordinance that was read in. So, anyone from the public wishing to speak, or unless the mayor wanted to go first?
The administration is trying to figure out what y'all are doing. So, we have a number of people that would like to speak. I don't know if you want to yield to us first, or if the council wishes to speak first, that's fine.
I will yield to you first.
We'll start with Beverly.
All right, I'll start with everyone just a second. The reason I wanted to talk about the reconsideration before you voted is, once you do the reconsideration, you no longer have a budget. There's no budget to amend, there's no budget, period. For you to go for a new budget today, you need to have suffi- sufficient notice under the Budget Act, and you do not. So now, you have put yourself in a place where you cannot pass a budget. I'm going to defer to Beverly, who's the one who spoke with the Legislative Auditor, then I'm going to defer to the Shehadi Sherman Firm, who is the one that renders the opinion that you may not amend the budget in this fashion. And I apologize, because I tried to help you before that happened.
No need to apologize. You know, you, you help when you help, and sometimes you lis- people listen, sometimes they don't, but no apology needed.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman McKenney would like to speak, if she could, please.
Yes, Councilwoman McKenney.
Okay, I just want to clarify a point of order. Is, it's my understanding that the city attorney renders the legal opinions for the city, and she said that, according to the council rules, that we can do this, is that correct?
I wasn't asked about reconsideration, or if you put all the agenda, but it was my opinion that it can be discussed later.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait, I just, I just need to clarify something, because I just found out something I didn't realize. It was put on for reconsideration without the city attorney's input?
Uh, defined input?
Can we do this?
She just, she just said that we can do it.
After it was put on the agenda, though, is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure when and where, but she did confirm that we were able to do this.
After it was put on the agenda?
I, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying there were conversations about it being done.
That's what I just heard, so I'm just making sure everybody heard that.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say there were conversations for us to do this, and I believe she just said that we're okay. So, you, your floor.
Mr. Chairman, if I could get a point of order, are we in our open hea- in our hearing right now?
Yes.
Or are we allowing comment before hearing?
We, we are in open for open hearing. The mayor has asked for some people to say, to introduce some people to speak.
Okay, could you just give me a motion in a second, and then we can go on to discussions?
Motion by Councilman Carroll, second by Councilman Wilmot, for a discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
As you know, our finance department is under active audit, and we have a consultant who is helping us, who was the CFO in New Orleans Parish, the CFO in St. Tammany Parish, the CFO in St. Bernard Parish. So she's relatively familiar with budgets and has been doing a lot of the budget work with us. Once she realized what the motion was, she, I believe, contacted the Legislative Auditor. I'm going to let her talk about that.
Thank you.
One more point, sir. If we could please vote to go to open your hearing, we have not voted to open.
Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Hayes? Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Okay, motion passes 7-0, you are in a public hearing.
All right, great, hello. Good evening, council. I'm Beverly Garapi. I've been working, as Deborah mentioned, through Solient Group, Socia- I can never say it correctly, Solution Group, to assist with the development of the 2021, 20...
Ma'am, could you bring that mic closer to you?
Sure, absolutely. How's that? Better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I saw the, of course, I, I follow your ordinances, I'm following your, you know, the budget process, I was here for the hearings and the vote. And when I saw this appear on, as a special meeting, my immediate concern was that if you rescind an adopted budget, you don't have time, you have to really go back through the total process again. By the advertising, you have to have the specific requirements of Louisiana Government Budget Act that does, addresses fund balances, all your expenditures and revenues, detailed revenues, expenditures by departments, and that if you rescinded it and you did not go through the proper notifications, and by that, by having it advertised and available for public inspection, and then adoption, which I, I don't, I really wasn't sure what you all were trying to do, but sounded like you wanted to rescind the budget you adopted, and then put in place a brand-new budget. That's what it, but I don't know. And if that is what you're attempting to do, that requires a whole lot longer period of time and advertisement, so the public is made aware. The goal of this, and this is with the Legislative Auditor, I spoke with Patrick Vergonamo, who's been there since 2008, in the legal department, and he said it was not envisioned ever that you'd adopt two budgets for the same fiscal year. That you would adopt a budget, and certainly, as I listened at your, the meeting where you adopted the budget, the, you all requested some amendments, and the mayor agreed, yes, I'll go back, we can go back and amend it. That, in my opinion, in the opinion of the Legislative Auditor, is the appropriate path to take, so that you can amend it. I mean, this, that's absolutely correct, but to introduce an entirely new budget without the proper notifications, I do not believe is an enforceable budget. And so, that is really my concern for you all here tonight, because you want to make sure the public is fully aware of what you're doing, they have the ability to have input, and that they're noticed, and that is about, because this needs to be done, it's other people's money, it's taxpayers' money, and they really need to know what's going on. So those are the comments that I received from the Legislative Auditor. I have never amended and adopted, never reintroduced a, a new budget for a fiscal year once it's been adopted. It, like I said, it's unprecedented, the Legislative Auditor had never heard of it. Again, you can amend it, I'm not saying don't amend it, that is absolutely not what I'm saying, but I'm just saying this is not the proper mechanism by which to do so.
Councilman Brennan?
Well, I was, I have notes before I spoke to him. Sure, I can give you, send you my, copy of my notes that I wrote. I spoke with him on the 8th, I guess, whenever I saw, whenever 8th, I believe it was. Today is the...
14th.
14th.
So we're hearing about this today?
Let me, let me interject there. We, we were, I called you, Councilman Branigan, on Tuesday night to say, where are the amendments that you asked me to do that I committed to this whole council two Thursdays ago, one Thursday ago? I called you Tuesday evening or Wednesday evening, and I said, where are the amendments? You were not aware that it was under for reconsideration.
No, I was aware that it was going to be under reconsideration.
Is it possible, you have our cell numbers, that you can reach out to all of us?
And it, again, I've...
It's a simple yes or no answer.
No, it's not, because I'll, I'll say, I'll say this publicly again, it works two ways. I think you know my number also. So, I've said that publicly once before, I'll continue to say that. Right, because this council, this council puts reconsideration on when I committed to put up two amendments. So we were a little confused, and we were trying to figure out what's going on.
So you didn't call Councilman Branigan?
I called Councilman Branigan, because he's...
You didn't call Councilman Branigan, is what you're saying.
I called, Councilman Brennan. I'm, I could be interrogated by you. So, I called Councilman Branigan, because Councilman Branigan is the one that asked me to do the amendments, along with Councilman McKenney. So I committed to that, so I called him, when he said, we had two, two or three conversations that night.
I was not the only one to ask for any amendments or anything, and...
We met with you and Councilman McKenney on Thursday morning.
I was told that this was the proper way to do this, and I think I, uh...
I told you that it was.
It's Ms. Beverly, I appreciate her input, and I think we need to go to our city attorneys and find out what the real deal is. And can we do it, or can't we do it?
Well, I think our city attorney already answered that question, that's why I repeated it, because it was put on for reconsideration, then she was asked, and she said, yes, it can be reconsidered, as per her own words, but there's a process to reconsider it before tomorrow.
Councilman McKenney?
So, yes, she's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Brennan, you...
Wasn't there a question made about amendments at that time?
That's exactly why I called.
At that meeting, that's what...
At the meeting or the phone call?
At the previous, prior to the previous council meeting, not entirely, I'm asking...
I, I don't understand the question.
I'm repeating, I'll hold, I'll hold slower, because it's worse. At the prior meeting to the council meeting, I was not there. My understanding is that Councilwoman McKenney and Councilman Branigan suggested amendments and asked about amendments, and were told, I believe by Mr. Rapier, if I'm correct, that amendments couldn't be made that evening.
That's, I don't know what Mr. Rapier told them, that's a question of Mr. Rapier, not for the administration, okay?
Councilman, what I said is that it's a complicated process, and it turned out that we did not have all of the numbers necessary to make the amendment that evening. Could you have, yes, had we had all the information, it would have worked. We did not have all the information necessary, because it turned out that there was additional dollars that were needed to, to accomplish everything that it was trying to be accomplished.
So now, back to this network, what is the opinion in itself? Can we move forward with this as we have outlined?
Yes, you can move forward with this. So, Ms. Beverly stated a couple of things, one of the words she used was rescind, I believe, or something that is not reconsideration. Reconsideration is a procedural tool in your council rules that allows you to basically go back in time to the budget ordinance, and you've already had three public hearings on this budget ordinance. You had the public hearing in here, where it was the budget hearing, where we stayed in here for nine hours and answered questions, and then you had your June 3 meeting. All of these advertisements have happened, this is not rescinding anything, you are merely taking yourself back to right before the vote happened. So, I believe reconsideration is a procedural tool by which this council can vote on the budget tonight, make the amendments tonight, and get it done, and get the budget in place. It's, it's not, we're not rescinding anything, we're not going to have two budgets adopted. We are literally going back in time to June 3. We're, your budget ordinance is on the floor as if we were there right now, so...
All we're doing is reconsidering the budget.
And, as I understand it, you're offering a couple of amendments that you all have worked on with the administration, Ms. Herring and Ms. Foshee and the mayor. So, it's my legal opinion that you can move forward with the reconsideration of the budget, and you're past reconsideration now, now the budget's on the floor before you. And the Budget Act says, the Budget Act says, or requires... As far as public notice, Mayor and I think Ms. Beverly said that, you know, we just wanted to know what y'all were doing, the public needs to know what y'all are doing. So, in Title 39, 1307, "Public Participation. No proposed budget shall be considered for adoption or otherwise finalized until at least one public hearing has been conducted on the proposal." So, you have had three. Tonight will make three public hearings.
Thank you, Attorney. And I am, out of the words of our city attorney, that I am comfortable with her opinion, because that's what it is, an opinion, just like what you read, Ms. Beverly, is an opinion, and we've had opinions before that we've disagreed with, and we've gone forward. So, staying within that, staying with the support of our city attorney, we can't pick and choose when we're going to agree with her and when we're not. If we're going to agree with her, then we're going to agree with her. If we're not going to agree with her, then we, you know, this is where we at. So, Ma- Mr. Mayor, is the second person that you wanted to speak after Ms. Beverly, is that person here?
Yes, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Beverly is not a lawyer, so when she brought this information to us, she's almost like a lawyer, right? She can play a lawyer, I've known a law...
She sounds like one to be pissed off.
Sounds pretty smart, right? But she's not. So when she brought that to us on the 9th or the 10th, we realized we could not act on that. So we took it to David Sherman at the Shehadi Sherman Firm, who's under contract with us. We received a preliminary answer, but they needed more information on the 11th, and then on today, the 14th, is when they gave us their actual opinion this morning around 11:30, 12 o'clock. I don't have a written opinion from them, they are here to tell you their concerns, and then once that's done, I have some practical concerns I want to raise with you, not legal concerns, practical concerns about trying to do this now. So if you don't mind, if we could let the fine folks from Shehadi Sherman speak, I would appreciate it.
Oh, for sure.
Councilman Branigan has his hand up, sir, I just wanted to let you know.
Before they speak, did you talk to our city attorneys about it?
They spoke to us and advised that they had not been contacted, I also reached out and said, check the Budget Act.
So, Councilman, we're going to, we're going to have an opportunity to speak, let's just, let's just let the mayor and his, his, uh, persons speak, and Ms. Beverly, are you, were you finished before we move on? Okay, so thank you, Ms. Beverly, so now, I think it's the attorney...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, I really don't know you, and we've, I've heard you say you did this in the past. Could you just tell me what kind of experience you have had in the public sector?
Yes, I was the...
Loud, please, because I can't hear.
Yes, 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 I was a CAO for the city of Covington, I was a CFO for St. Tammany Parish, I was a Director of Finance for St. Bernard Parish, and my last position was the CFO for the city of New Orleans, and I retired in 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. So, Mr. Mayor, the attorneys are here, and attorneys, if you can name an address, please.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. My name is Rory Bellina with Shehadi Sherman Williams Law Firm, 1 Galleria Boulevard, Suite 1100.
And it's Shehadi, Shehadi Sherman Williams, 1 Galleria Boulevard, Suite 1100, Metairie, Louisiana.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The first point that we wanted to bring to the council and public attention was, we're unaware of now of the notice requirement being met for, we realize that under Rule 9, this must be published in the official journal, if it's, if there's not time to make an official journal for a special meeting publication, it must be published in any newspaper of general circulation. We've been able to obtain a copy of that, so we just wanted to clarify with the council that that requirement was met.
Yes, yeah, we, we, we were pretty clear with that, that it was met. Yes, thank you, though.
Okay, so, so moving on to that point, after that point, this would be considered a, now we move into, and I'll, the, kind of the way that I'd like to outline this, if allowed, is we'll go through the city of Kenner rules, and then on to the Budget Act. The first position is that this would be, this is going to fall under a proposed ordinance. So, an ordinance cannot be adopted under your rules at the same meeting in which it was introduced, so this would be an ordinance for the new budget with the revised financial numbers, and under Rule, Section 2.14, there is a seven-day holdover, which would put you past your June 15 deadline. So, we realize that that is a procedural hurdle in itself. Then, moving on to the next point, is that Section 2.16 requires that mandatory public hearings shall be had for every budgetary matter. So that article or that section coincides with the Budget Act 39, 1307, which requires a 10-day notice period, notice from when the new budget, the, the one that is being discussed tonight with the new financial figures, is being proposed, to when it can be voted on, and it has to be 10 days given from when that time occurs until when it can be voted on for public inspection. So, as of tonight, there are discussions being made, but we don't know what those financial numbers look like. So that is another concern that we have, that we're not going to meet that 10-day notice requirement. The next part is that Section 2.19 states that all ordinances and resolutions shall be published within 15 days, and there's also, if they're not signed by the mayor, a seven-day holdover period. So again, these, these timelines come in, into great importance, as Ms. Beverly stated, because we're getting past the June 15 deadline, obviously, tomorrow. So we wanted to make that a note to everyone, that from a timeline procedure, we feel that there's not the correct and adequate amount of time to do this. Next part is powers and duties. Section 3.09 specifically states that it's the mayor's duty to prepare and submit to the council the operating capital budgets. It is not clear, and it's ambiguous in the actual Kenner City ordinances, that the city council has this power to do so. So that's another issue that we wanted to bring to the point, that it's not clear in your own rules, it states that the mayor shall prepare and submit to the council, it doesn't discuss the procedure for going back this way. Another important part that we wanted to bring to the council's attention is Section 6.08, is that the mayor is responsible for the preparation of the budget, and every request for the budget shall be accompanied by substantiation, substantiation in detail of needing cost of investment of all revenues available for capital purposes for the next fis- fiscal year, statement of debt, and the proposed new debt. So again, going back to our other point, if tonight we're just discussing the, the idea of an amendment without the actual financial numbers behind it, we believe that that does not meet the definition of a budget under 16, 6.08 of your rules. Then we go to the Louisiana Budget Act, which coincides with your rules and states that upon completion of the proposed budget, which tonight would be a new proposed budget, because there's being changes to it, there has to be published notice stating that's available for public inspection. The notice shall be published at least 10 days prior to the date of the first public hearing. So I believe the city attorney mentioned that there's been public hearing already, tonight will be the third public hearing. It's our opinion that by doing so tonight, if you follow through with this procedure, you're creating a new budget. I understand that it is, it's an amendment, but it changes the financial figures of the budget, so it should allow the public another 10-day period from passage to review it. And coinciding with that, it states that no proposed budget, which this new one would be, shall be considered for adoption or otherwise finalized until at least one public hearing. So this goes back to the, the fact that the changes that would be discussed tonight, although it is an amendment to a current budget that's already been adopted, these changes are constituting a new budget. The numbers are going to change, and the public has not had the opportunity to view those numbers, it hasn't met the notice requirements, nor the publication requirements, and there, there's, there's, has not been another hearing.
Is that, is that it?
Yes.
Well, thanks a lot, sir, we appreciate that. Attorney Russo, we're going to, we're going to hold off and tell everyone that the mayor has to speak before you can address his comments as well. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marizan, who's the next person?
That would be me. I've got a couple of just practical considerations for your adoption. So, as you recall, the last time that we attempted this, we did not have the numbers to be able to adopt it. You will not have those numbers tonight to be able to adopt it as well. The information that you must have in your budget to be able to adopt it is six items according to the Louisiana Budget Act. The beginning fund balance, the ending fund...
The beginning fund balance, the ending fund balance, expenditures by agency, expenditures by department, expenditures by function, and expenditures by character. We will be able to identify for you the beginning balances, that will not change, and the expenditure by agency, because the City of Kenner is the agency. However, the changes that, assuming I know what you're doing, um, the changes that you'll be making will change the numbers for the other four as a consequence. You will not tonight have numbers to vote on. So you'll be voting on a concept of a budget, but you won't actually be voting on a budget.
So the numbers have not been identified by the administration like it should have been for today? You have not submitted-
Actually, it's no way to accomplish that, because once you reconsidered it, you're at a special meeting with a budget that has 2% COLAs and 3% merits for executive staff who are in a supervisory provision. Under your own charter, now all the people sitting in here tonight, along with the people who had the special raises, that would be Liz, Tometia, Adam, Dwan, every director, every assistant director, they're losing their 2%, and they're losing their 3%, because you cannot approve those at a special meeting. As a consequence, at this point, no, we've not accounted for that, because that's gonna touch every single department. So we should not have done that, because this should not have been done by a special meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else, Marazan, that you had to, to speak on this subject?
And the, the question keeps coming up, basically, we're not prepared. Well, we don't, prepared for what? Last, we left the last budget meeting with me giving my word to a council that I was gonna come back with two amendments. That was why I called Councilman Brannigan, and Councilman Brannigan only, because when he felt comfortable with it, after we talked two or times after that, I assume the council changed their mind. I don't know why, but Christie and George's formula, that they, that they, they're asked to us and the formula we presented back works. The amendments for y'all's budget and research person, the amendments for the 2% raise that I agreed to, that y'all came up with, on top of my possible 5%, was going to work. I don't know what fell apart. And maybe, since you submitted it, Councilman Carroll, you and I have not had a discussion, what happened?
I don't, I don't think anything fell apart. I believe that as a council, as individuals, we wanted to provide to the citizens of Kenner an opportunity to be part of the July 1st, to give them the opportunity to start it at that budget time. So when that was quote-unquote reconsidered, that seemed to be the vehicle to use for this meeting.
So we wasted our time doing what we did, because we came back, again, they took that whole day Thursday, Liz and Deborah, to prepare that, to have a formula for y'all, okay, under the request, and we did it. Then also they took Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, I believe, and got something to you maybe on Tuesday? Monday evening, I think it was Memorial Day, so maybe Monday evening, Tuesday morning? Then all of a sudden, we heard the rumblings of a reconsideration. Which, again, I don't get those phone calls. Councilman Brennan wants to ask why don't I call, why I don't get those phone calls? So that's why I called Councilman Brannigan. He gave me the answer. He didn't know it, he, we didn't know it first, both of us didn't know at first what was going on. And then he called back, and I think it was two conversations after that, and he explained it's gonna be reconsidered. I'm like, "Okay, what?" So, you know, it's a little bit like, what's going on? We, we need to know what direction. So we had to reach out elsewhere to get some answers.
Yeah, well, you, you never waste your time. I think the time spent by all the individuals was appropriate. I just believe that your, your opinion prior to the reconsideration, everything was either in place or had the information. And now, because of the opinion, that some of the information is not there. So I think that is where we are as far as the timeline of advertising, of having the proper documentation or opinions from, you know, the fine folks from Adams and Reese, uh, Ms. Foshee, who are attorneys, their opinion. So that's what we're hearing today.
No, I, I got you, I mean, just, you know, it's Shahadi Sherman, just.
Oh, Shahadi, excuse me. Yeah, so do you have anyone else to present?
You had one more.
Well, thank you. So now we're gonna let, uh, the city's attorney from the City of Kenner address the Shahadi's, uh, firm opinion, and as it relates to anyone else that spoke prior to that. Attorney Russo.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Carroll. Okay, so this, the attorneys from the fine firm of Shahadi Sherman, this is all smoke and mirrors, um, ladies and gentlemen. So, you know, they're trying to confuse the issues. This is the same identical budget that was before you all on June 3rd. It is similar to the budget that was presented by the administration to you all on May 1st, which was subsequently, pages were changed out, and numbers were tweaked, and that happens. But I, I, I don't, I don't know why, I'm not gonna debate the legal issues with these attorneys that are behind me, um, because frankly, I'm the city attorney, and my opinion is the only opinion that matters. So you, it's, it's our opinion that you can proceed to reconsider this budget. It is not a new budget, it is the same budget that was before you all on June 3rd, is exactly as I said earlier. Like you are going back in time to that date, and you are voting on that budget, and you can offer your amendments tonight. Rather than reading them in summary, you can offer them tonight. The only difference is, is yes, we are at a special council meeting, and you need a two-thirds majority vote to approve anything tonight. So when you make your amendments, you will need to have five of the seven here in order to enact those amendments. But I, I don't understand why the legal department is being ambushed by these attorneys from Shahadi Sherman tonight. I don't understand why this question was not presented to us at last Tuesday, when we had our executive staff meeting, when we were asked if this was correct and if it could be done. We said we thought it was legally correct, and that it could be done. It's legal, it's proper, that is our official opinion. And when we gave the mayor and Ms. Foshee our opinion, we were not questioned. We, you know, basically gave them our opinion, I guess they didn't like it, and so they went outside, to outside counsel. And I'd like to just finish with this. Uh, Section 4.09 of the Charter, Duties of the City Attorney. "City Attorney shall supervise the conduct of the legal affairs of the city." "The City Attorney shall supervise the conduct of the legal affairs of the city." I understand that Shahadi Sherman is under contract, but, um, I, I, I don't understand why this administration and mayor went to an outside counsel to get this opinion. But here we are, it's, it's our opinion that it's legal, it's proper. You're not considering a new budget, this is the same budget that the administration presented to you all on June 3rd.
Thank you, ma'am. And now the council will take the opportunity, uh, we're gonna start from my left, and let Councilmember Hayes first. Councilmember Hayes, you have the floor.
What I find interesting in all of this, and I believe we should obviously follow the Louisiana Budget Act, but we're talking about, well, at least last meeting, we were talking about a new position. And that position was gonna require an attorney. And that attorney was gonna represent us, the council. 'Cause it could be at odds with the city attorney. So it seems like the council wants to listen to what you're saying tonight. But what's gonna happen if and when we pass the new position? Can you see outside attorney, city attorney, and our attorney agreeing on everything? This is not the way to do business. It really isn't. I'm listening to somebody that has more public experience than anybody in this room. I'm listening to the legislative auditor, I'm listening to outside attorney. This is not the way to do a budget. Plain and simple. The last meeting I asked, that we look at, budget consideration and new position, two different things, two different votes. So we have not even discussed that yet. 'Cause I'm forgiving raises, no doubt about it, we all are. But I'm not in favor of doing what we're doing tonight. It seems like we're up here arguing, and I'm sure we look like fools to our taxpayers. So I just think that, uh, at this point, we're rushing into something that if we make a decision tonight and run with it, we could be liable again if somebody comes and contests our decision tonight. We're gonna look worse. I just think we should do business under a firm rule. And I think we all should agree when something is done, all this business about you called me, you didn't call me, I've never called on anything, to tell you the truth, except 4 o'clock for the new position by one person on this panel. I'm gonna vote no again for this budget review. To proceed, I'm gonna vote no, and for the new position, I'm gonna proceed to vote no. We're creating an albatross here, 'cause I can see one meeting where three attorneys do not agree.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKinney.
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate that. Um, well, there's a couple of things that I wanna, that I wanna share and, and say. First of all, I was one of the people who brought the amendment to the mayor, and I didn't receive a phone call. So, um, he also, may I, my number is 504-250-3117 in the future, so you, you can call me in the future. So, moving past that, um, we were encouraged actually by the mayors and the administration to have a special meeting to consider the amendments. So in, in reviewing of the council rules, in reviewing of the council rules, we discussed, and actually we did contact the city attorney with, uh, you know, I came up with the, uh, fact that we could do a reconsideration on any ordinance. I clarified with the city attorney, it, it is a budget ordinance, we can clarify, we can reconsider that. And that was, and that's how we came for the suggestion. If we do these amendments tonight, the budget can be voted on tonight. If we vote on it tonight, that'll give us enough time to enact the raises on July 1st. We wanna make sure that all the employees, everyone who gets that 2%, can actually get that 2% as of July 1st. We don't want, if we voted on it, if we waited, did a reading, and then voted on it on, in June 20, on June 25th, then those, on July 30, on July 1st, those raises have, they have a holdover for, for, I believe, 14 days or 17 days. So they wouldn't be able to get that raise until mid-July at the earliest. So that is why we wanted to do the consideration, and that's what I discussed, was I discussed with the council president. Secondly, um, just to point out the fact, all of this, everyone is saying that the public won't have enough time to see the budget. Actually, the public wasn't released the budget, and the actual budget, it wasn't put online until June 2nd. We voted on it on June 3rd. That is less than 24 hours, or that is less than two full days, but that the public got to see the budget. So regardless, the, the public has now seen the budget since July, June 2nd. No one even knows what amendments we want to put on. So before castigating us and saying that this, all, you know, no one knows the numbers and we're changing the budget, maybe you should wait until the amendments get presented? Because in actuality, the amendments that we're doing are the amendments that you guys worked up on Monday. So let's not put the cart before the horse. So all of those numbers are the numbers that are in line with what you provided. And we were also, just to point, to point out what Councilwoman Brennan said, at this pre-meeting, we were told that as the council, we couldn't provide the amendments, 'cause they didn't have enough time to do the numbers. That is patently false. So we were lied to by the administration that us as a legislative body could not make amendments, when that is the only time we can make the amendments. So to say that I am slightly livid at that opinion is an understatement. Secondly, we, as, as the city attorney pointed out, we had multiple budget hearings. We interacted with the administration on multiple times. And, and I was gonna say this a little later, it took me three times to request the information from the CFO, three times over 10, a period of 10 days, to request information from the administration for all of the council members, I included all the council members, to get that information. And then, at that time, I was told, "Please do not reach out to the directors directly," 'cause as this is a very busy time. All I did was call the CFO to ask her a question. So we're not getting information that we need. That is the reason why we're doing both of these amendments, so we can get the information that we need as the legislative branch to ov, to have executive, to have legislative oversight over the administration. I, you know, if you're not familiar with my background, I have a master's in public policy. I'm very familiar with the separation of powers between the executive, the legislative, and the judicial branch. The legislative branch is a check on this. If we're not getting the information that we need in, in a timely manner, then they are impeding our ability to be legislative, to provide legislative oversight. That is why we have to approve every expense over $5,000. There are lots of things that we do as legislative, legislators, as legislative oversight. The administration does have the ability to control and make decisions, everyday decisions. But all of those financial decisions are, that's our oversight ability. So, um, I think that's all that I have to say right now. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Carroll.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll, we'll come back, let us, let us-
There's gonna be a lot to, if everybody has comments that-
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be a lot, it was a lot before. So Councilman Wilmot.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Russell, if, if you can, I just, I know you've already mentioned these things, but I'm, I'm gonna, I wanna rehash it just a little bit.
Sure.
So it's gonna be duplative information, but then again, I think it's important enough that we need to just, and I'm gonna be just laser focused just on this main issue, to me. At this point, we haven't rescinded anything, is that correct?
That's correct.
We're just reconsidering, correct?
That's correct.
So, in, in light of that, it's your opinion that we're okay to go forward with what we're doing to add amendments?
Yes, it's legal, it's proper, it's reconsideration is just a procedural tool whereby you can reconsider any ordinance or any resolution at the next regular or special council meeting. As long as that ordinance does not become law by, by operation of law, which would be the 10 days after publication.
Then we gotta get, not just a simple majority, but a super majority.
You gotta get a two-thirds majority, because we're at a special council meeting, yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Brannigan.
I think that, uh, I know that I heard in our meeting on, at 8:30, uh, on that June 3rd, that one of your concerns, Marazan, was if you get an attorney in the position that we want, who, who's gonna make the final decision? And you said, and Ms. Foshee said, or agree, agreed, and we agree with you, that our city attorney is the final decision, the bottom line. So if our city attorney tells us we can do this, then we're moving forward. The other thing is, uh, one of the Shahadi people said you need to notify people 10 days, okay? What does our charter say when the public needs to be notified for the budget process? We get the, we got the budget on May 1st. On May 15th, we got 68 pages of changes. On, I think it was two days before the council meeting, we got another 38 pages of changes. I wanna know if the charter says that the public should be notified within a certain time? Because they were not notified until it hit the website on June 2nd. So I want an answer to that question.
Okay, Councilman Brannigan, um, I, I'm not sure what the attorneys from Shahadi Sherman said. They have not provided me with their written legal opinion.
Don't worry about that stuff. Does the charter tell us we have to have it in front of the public 30 days, 20 days, 5 days, 37 seconds?
You, you're required to have a public hearing on your, on your budget ordinance. It is an ordinance that lays over 28 days.
Okay.
So that ordinance was put on the agenda at some point 28 days before June 3rd. It gets advertised within that time period, but that is the ordinance. That is not the budget book that you all have sitting in front of you. It is the ordinance.
But when does that, when does the public, when is the public supposed to be able to look at that book?
I guess, well, I don't know that the charter addresses that, Councilman Brannigan. I think the Budget Act may address that.
Because I don't think that, given the, the residents of our city, uh, June 2nd, we release the budget to them, and, and then we vote, we, we, we have to vote on it on June 3rd. And I think, what is your name, the guy? Rory? I think Rory said that this stuff has to go for a 10-day wait, and is that the same deal?
I mean, I don't know, I don't know-
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what they did with, with the budget book. I mean, I, I know that it was posted online.
Yeah, but it wasn't posted online till June 2nd.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't get that knee-deep in the, you know, minutia of, you know, their publication of the budget book.
Well, that's, that's totally ridiculous. Not enough time for the public to look at it.
Are you finished, Councilman?
I'm done.
Okay. Yes, he's, he's the very next one. Councilwoman Brannigan.
Nine days.
And three emails?
Three emails, yes.
And then, you were told not to contact the directors?
Yes.
And who did that come from?
Deborah Foshee. It said during this very busy time, she's afraid, refrain from contacting the directors directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So.
I'm sorry. I have an answer to Councilwoman Brannigan's question.
Okay. And this is, could you repeat the question, attorney, and then answer it?
Yeah. You asked when the budget has to be made available to the public.
Correct.
Before it is adopted.
Correct.
Okay. Title 39, 1307, I read from this earlier. Public Participation says the notice shall be published at least 10 days prior to the date of the first public hearing. So, 10 days prior to the date of your public hearing.
Thank you. So.
So, we didn't do that, then? Or the administration didn't do that?
And not for legal?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we, so, Mayor Zahn, now you.
Right. I mean, the council has the right to do it also. I mean.
So, let's just, I'm being nice.
It would be the responsibility of the council. So, I don't think we need to get into.
No, we're not, we're not gonna get into that. We're gonna get into what's on the floor.
We're gonna get into a debate that, you could publish, you could publish the budget.
To publish.
You could. Uh, Councilman, let's just, let's just stay on subject. We can, we can, let's not go all over the place. Merzon, I think you had some comments based on.
I think a few of us have some comments. I guess, first of all, for Councilwoman McKinney, Ms. Foshee's gonna answer the, because we did have a budget hearing. Went through all that. That's usually where the questions happen. And I'm quite aware of your phone number because I believe that I've seen some things that your phone number shares basically polls seven, six other council people about how you could do it tonight. That's another whole issue which I believe breaks the sunshine laws. So, I'm quite aware of your phone number. I've seen what your phone number could possibly do. We have absolutely given you every answer that you have asked for. We have definitely responded to you. If it's not immediately, we do get a response to you. The budget hearing was the time, you've had it since May 1st. While it has changed, that's, that's a moving government. Government continues to move forward. Government does a lot of things. So, when Ms. Foshee says, please contact us, it's because Liz has a lot of work that she's doing on the budget as she's trying to answer not just one council person's questions, but maybe phone calls and other emails besides the daily operations of the, of the government. I don't know why it's so, there's some animosity there in your speech, like we have stopped this council from seeking answers. I don't think this council has ever had a problem with this administration answering questions. We answer to our best of our ability as quickly, quickly as we can. The budget is extremely important. But everyday government, you know, continues to go on. We're here every day. And I've heard that before, and I know I don't like it. But I understand why people would sit in my seat either here on the parish president's seat, make those comments. Because we are here every day. So, as we're taking care of numerous issues, also with the budget that's extremely important, we're getting to your responses. I don't think any of your responses have never not been answered. And there have been phone calls in between those emails. So, you can paint a picture of this administration that it's a problem. That's fine. I think the people sitting behind me from the general public would like to know what's on an agenda for tonight on a budget that they have not seen. Just like this administration has not seen it. Because no one has called, well, I can't say no one. I haven't gotten a call from most of you all about what's gonna be on the budget. That's why I did call Councilwoman Brannigan. I didn't call you because I didn't need to. Once I called Councilwoman Brannigan, and he was comfortable with it because I assumed that you two had spoken. If y'all haven't, then I guess we're wrong. But I don't think we are. Deborah?
We all need to take a breath. We all need to take a deep breath. Because at the end of the day, I'm sorry, move it closer. I mean, at the end of the day, we really are all trying to do the right thing. And we're just disagreeing on how to do it, all right? So, you may be unhappy with what we've done. Or we may be unhappy with what you've done. But at the end of the day, we're all really trying to do one thing. So, I'm gonna answer some of the questions. And I think a lot of things could have been done better, right? But I don't think anybody's up to anything evil. I just think that there's some problems with the process. So, what normally happens and what has happened in every budget I've been involved in, including City of Kenner budgets through last year, is that at the budget hearing, you raise the questions. You talk about things you'd like changed. We make those drafts for you. We agree, we disagree, we submit them. And when you've come to the budget to vote, you're voting on this. That's what you're voting on when you vote on a budget. You're not voting on a, a concept of a budget or an amendment to a budget. You're actually voting on the budget. So, this is the first year I've ever been involved in a budget here, Jefferson Parish, City of Covington, where the day of the budget hearing, we got requests to make amendments. And we agreed to do them, but we could not do them that day. And I'm, I'm sorry, Councilwoman McKinney, I must beg to differ. There is no way to have made those changes that day. Because in, in your first probably 15 or 20 pages of your budget, you'll find that there are budget calculations that are across the board. They are the things that I just read out. That's not something that we can do that day. And these changes you're making today, because of the fact that you're also defunding their raises, can't be made here as well. They just can't be made because we don't have the capacity, we don't, we haven't run those things. We, we are not prepared to run those things because we were not prepared for there to be an emergency meeting that had this result. I did not encourage you to meet and consider what I, and if that came across, I apologize. I encourage you to meet to read it into summary. The point of reading it into summary was simply to give you the time to adopt, okay? So, I had no intention of, of you guys having a meeting where you would discuss anything. It really was a, a read into summary. So, what you're putting on tonight is not the amendments that we discussed that day. Because again, you have to make those changes for these employees and for the Tamithia and Dawn and Adam and Liz. But also, again, we have proposed that you make an amendment that instead of defunding a position for which there is no support, that you defund positions for which we have some backup. So, you all, you all have that as well if you would consider that.
Be a little more clear on that. If this passed tonight, there's a 2% extra for our civil servants. The administration is 100% behind that. But you're hurting other employees. And that's why we requested, we requested, not you, Kristi, we requested a special council meeting to you, Greg. And then all of a sudden, we had a reconsideration, which is flooring the process. So, while you're giving 2% to our entitled police, entitled firemen, and civil servants, we're not getting these raises that Deborah read those names. And Deborah, I'd like you to read those names again. So, I'm, I know it's, I know.
They're all here.
I know, but it's the salary changes, the salary changes that they will be affecting and each and every director and assistant director that all of us call on. Everybody calls on. I'm not worried about what the naysayers say, that there's too much money being spent. I'm worried about the production of services that are done by this administration, not by Ben Zahn, not by Deborah Foshee, but by the ones that are under her and I. Every deputy CEO, every director, every assistant director. And we're still not getting that 2% to our employees. Because I'm gonna have an issue with this budget. I'm, I'm gonna have an issue with the way this is going down tonight. So, tomorrow's the cutoff date. It's too late. We've gotta come to a conclusion tonight. Leave attorneys out of it if we want to. But let's talk like Deborah said. Let's talk about what's best for the employees. Let's not worry, Kristi, about who gets the credit. Let's worry about the people getting the credit. I must have ticked someone off when I sent out the letter the next day that said Ben Zahn doesn't deserve the credit and the council doesn't. I'm sorry, guys. Y'all don't deserve it. Neither do I. The people who sweat every day out in the street, the policemen that protect us, and the firemen that keep our homes and our businesses from burning, deserve this. Y'all don't deserve the credit. Neither do I. But let's make sure we don't hurt everybody. So, the 2% passes tonight, I don't, I don't acknowledge it because it's flawed because you're hurting every other employee in the City of Kenner. That's where I have indifference with the council tonight. Go ahead, Deborah.
Councilwoman Brennan would like to speak, sir.
Councilwoman Brennan, let, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna let Deborah, and that'll be it from the administration. And then, then we can move on. We are gonna let the public say something. But we, we need to move on. We can't, we'll, this'll be all night if we don't have a. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna let Ms. Foshee respond from the administration, the, the finale. And then we'll, we'll have those remarks.
I'm actually not the finale. I'm the penultimate. But we're gonna ask.
Are you next to the finale?
That's correct. I'm pretty close to the finale.
You think I didn't know what that word meant?
I bet you did. I said that just for you.
That's right, yeah.
Catholic school, right?
Yeah. O-L-P-H. That's right.
But I wanted, I wanted to talk to, to one of the questions George raised because he's absolutely right. There's a couple of things going on. One is us putting on the Facebook page, which is not notice. I mean, that just doesn't count. Notice is like the, the actual official publishing. So, we can put it up sooner on the Facebook page. We absolutely can. But when we're getting ready to vote on it, we also need the council to post it in the official journal. But I think, when I'm gonna give this to Liz, I think having it available in the finance office is the same under the rules. I could be wrong. I'm gonna let her address that. But that doesn't matter. The fact that we met the rules doesn't, it's not the same as us getting it on the Facebook page sooner. That's not official notice. That doesn't meet any requirements. But it makes sense, George. So, I think you're right about that. I think we need to pay attention to that next year. When we send it to you on May 1st, probably should post that right then and there. When we send you an amendment, we should probably post that right then and there. Again, not official notice, nothing under the, under the law, just fair. And we need to do that. And I think that, I think that's something that we'll look at doing next year. And I think that's, that's it. Okay. So, Liz has some, some comments, both on what's required as well as some of the, I think, allegations that were made about her.
This is the finale, correct?
I think she is.
Okay.
But it's sort of like farming the dale. If she picks somebody.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Finale, that's right.
Thank you. So, yes, the ordinance that we proposed with the operating and capital budget states that the budget is available for review in the finance department. And it lists our hours of operation. So, it was publicized in enough time. The public had every opportunity to reach out to my department, come by and view the documents. So, it was proper. And so, like Ms. Foshee said, it does take a lot of time to calculate everything. It wasn't a lie, as Ms. McKinney said. It does take a lot of time. So, just like the last meeting is the same as this meeting, we don't have those calculations. I, I can't give you a starting balance and an ending balance with these amendments. So, if everything is packaged into one deal, I don't feel like you have the proper information. So, once you adopt a budget that has everything in it, like Beverly said, 100%, you can make amendments. We make amendments every year. But you have to have something to adopt first. You can't make the amendment all lumped into one unless we had enough time for calculations. So, like Mr. Brannigan said, we make changes. We gave y'all a copy on May 1st. Then we come out with more changes and more changes. It was just unfortunate that we didn't find out about the council's plans until the morning of the council meeting. So, and as soon as we found out, I went to the mayor's office and we worked all day long, you know, to prepare the amendments and, and work up the calculations and, and all that. So, it's just unfortunate, I, I mean, I don't want, I don't want the public to think that we didn't do what was asked of us because we did, so.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brannigan. And then, to close out from the council, let's, I don't see any hands up. Councilwoman Brennan. So, Councilwoman Brannigan, and then Councilwoman Brennan.
Given that alphabetically, is that?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay. So, basically, what you're saying is that this, the amendments that we agreed upon two weeks ago, 10 days ago, whatever it was, those calculations are not worth a drop today?
So, once a budget is adopted, you can make amendments. You don't have to recalculate beginning and ending fund balances, departments. You don't have to do that. Once a budget is passed and it requires all the things Ms. Foshee listed, you can just do an ordinance amendment. But you cannot do an amendment that doesn't have all the required information, like she said, beginning, ending, by agency, by department, by function, by character. You can't do that.
Okay. But in the last meeting, that day that y'all worked all day, y'all had all the numbers.
I, as an amendment, I can't, I, it's not like a press of a button in a budget book printed out with all the information. It takes time. It's every single page. And to be accurate, we could have, we could have slopped something together. Don't know if it was accurate. And I would never put a budget before y'all to vote on that does not have accurate figures in it. So, I don't, I don't know what else.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Brennan? Unless you, if you, are you finished, Councilman? Because you're just going back, yeah. Councilwoman Brennan?
I, I just wanna ask the, the city attorney again. You're comfortable with what we're doing and everything is, is, and the comments keep getting said that we're trying to take raises away.
Okay. You, your, your proposed budget is the identical budget that was proposed on June 3rd, okay? And that is what is before this body right now to be voted on. It is our position that you can amend that proposed budget. To say that you, you, to say that you can vote on a budget, but you can't ever amend it is not, that's not correct. I understand it's a complicated process. It's a 400 or 500-page document. There's a lot of numbers in there. It's gotta be balanced. But you, what's before you all tonight is the identical thing that was before you all on June 3rd. And you can amend it tonight and adopt it with, as amended tonight.
And everything stays in place for the dates and everything?
Yeah, they're, they're, I don't, I don't know what they mean when they say that you're, you're taking raises away. You're not taking, those raises were in their proposed budget on June 3rd. So, you're not taking anything away. You are, you have the same budget that's before you as was on June 3rd. You can offer your amendments. If those amendments pass by a vote of two-thirds majority, they will get adopted and you will have a budget as amended.
And, and for the record, I'm not trying to take credit for raises. I'm not trying to take credit away from raises. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So, Councilwoman McKinney, and then, then we'll go on to the public to see if they have some comments.
Yes. Thank you, Council President.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Council President. I just had a clarification and, um, toward the city attorney, as well as the council clerk, as well, council clerk, I just wanna ask a quite clarifying question. In the history of the city of Kenner, has the coun- city council at the budget hearing ever amended the budget at the meeting?
At the council meeting?
Yes.
Where we adopted the budget?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, other councils have amended the proposed budgets.
And they've done it the day of.
At the council meeting, yes, ma'am.
With no, with no changes in the numbers and no supporting documentation, because the, the, the layover, there's a layover of seventeen days or fourteen days for the budget amendment to figure out all those numbers and get that nuanced out, to get all those nuances figured out. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, I, I would wanna see what, what the amendments looked like, but I know, I can, I can answer your question and say, yes, definitely, uh, other councils have amended proposed budgets at the meeting.
So, we're not a unique, we're not unique in a men, wanting to amend the budget?
No, it's, it's just, as Mr. Rabier said, though, it was a complicated amendment. It was a lot of dollars that needed to, you know, I guess they worked on it for six hours that day, so.
Thank you, thank you. So, we are still in the public to talk about, is there anyone in the public who would want three minutes to either voice their opinion? Name and address.
My name is Greg Teft, and I'm fifth district. Uh, yeah, I just got a couple comments, because I, I've been fooling with budgets for years. Now, I understand if I'm listening to the city attorney, that since y'all wanting to make a change, and the public is not aware of what the change will be, and the public is not aware of how the budget, then the numbers would be laid out, because we don't have access to it, that's okay? I don't know.
That's not what I said, Mr. Teft.
It is what you just said.
Attorney, let, let him, 'cause his clock is running, and we don't wanna inter- interfere with his ability.
The other thing is, no matter how you roll the dice, whatever you do, you just changed that budget. Not one citizen out here knows what that change will be. So, we're having a meeting, and we have no clue what, what you're all changing, and whether you're, and that change could be simple as moving from this line item to that line item, but you haven't told me, and I'm a citizen. I have the right to know what's in that budget, regardless of what legal says. I still have that right. The other thing is, any change you make to that budget is changing a dollar amount somewhere. And once you make that change, that budget has changed. Now, again, me, I know my citizenship here in Kenner is really not much, but you know what? I'm entitled to it. I'm entitled to it as a citizen to know what the operating budget's gonna be in Kenner. Because you know why? I pay some tax money.
Thirty seconds, move to Tiff.
That's fine. Uh, the other thing I wanna bring up is that y'all had the budget, if I understand it correctly, on May 1st? Well, shame on y'all, because if it took you from May 1st to June 3rd to finally make your changes, all I gotta say, and I hope everybody, every constituent out there hears me, we may just have the wrong council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Is there anyone else? Mr. Alve. Name, address?
Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 50th Street, 49 years. Uh, let me just say this. Uh, I've been going to the parish council meeting for almost thirty years. I've been coming to these for almost fifty. And I don't ever recall a, a budget being amended in a special meeting. And I agree with some of the comments Councilman Hayes said. Now, the parish has to follow the Budget Act just like the city of Kenner does. So, now, a proposal in here tonight is one thing. But an actual amendment, I think would be illegal in here tonight. I don't think an amendment to this budget could be done in a special meeting. It's got to be done in a regular meeting. And this is the way it's been going on since I've been attending all of these meetings. So, I, I just, I don't, I'm not an attorney by no means. I'm just talking about what I've witnessed with budgets over the years at county council meeting and parish council meeting. So, I think before we do anything here tonight, we better get some clarity, and we better make sure we doing the right thing. I'm not undermining what this who tells it. But I believe that the Budget Act is being interpreted in different ways. It's not being interpreted to what it means. This could cause a serious consequence for our city down the road. We don't need any more lawsuits. We got enough of them already. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Councilman Branigan?
Look, uh, the, uh, the bottom line is, in the meeting with the administration, when Mr. Councilwoman McKinney and I met with them, Mayor Zahn said that the city attorney was the final drop, uh, in regards to, uh, any opinions that come out. And also, uh, Mr. Teft, I tell you, you're, you, you did a great job at the, uh, June 3rd meeting, and just now, talking with your hands, I really think you should get an Academy Award for that.
Thank you. So... So, madam, we're still in the public. Uh, Madam Clerk has said that there is someone, uh, citizen that has called in via Zoom, and we're gonna be on, he's gonna be on that screen, so if we can, uh, give him our attention. Uh, name and address, sir. Thanks, Josh. Thank you, Mr. Brown. And, you know, before we move on to the next thing, I guess, I guess I'll be the finale, Ms. Foshee, and say that. You know, this is the reason why we have these meetings. People have opinions. Sometimes they agree, sometimes they don't agree. I think it has been stated by people who are attorneys, Mr. Morella and Mr. Teft are not attorneys. The attorneys have made their opinion as an attorney. But they are entitled to their opinion, and we appreciate that as well. It has been stated that this is exactly the identical budget. No one is changing that. Uh, the mayor is correct. He did, I was informed about the special meeting, got the information, shared it. The only thing different is that the vehicle being presented tonight for the reconsideration is the only thing that was changed or added, however you wanna look at it. But, uh, you know, we, we knew that was going on, and that changed. And it seems as if that has been a con- contested by some people. For whatever reason, it, uh, maybe it rubbed them the wrong way. I don't know. But it seemed as if that was, maybe was going on here. But everybody's entitled to their opinion, and that's exactly what we're getting. Like I said before, for us, to have the confidence, for us, and many, many, many other times, to defer to our city attorney, is what we have done in the past. Every time, every administration, ev- most council have, have followed that. Even if they disagree with it, it was normally voted on to follow the opinion of the city attorney. Our city attorney has given her opinion. She have gone into details on a number of different things that some people agree with, some people don't agree with. But we as a council will have to vote based on what we believe, our confidence in her as we are right now. And I think that is where we are right now. We could stay in here all day going back and forth on what people believe, what they don't believe. Because whenever you get a bunch of attorneys in a room, you are gonna get a number of different opinions. That is just a fact, without a doubt. So, not saying neither one, but that's what they do, you know? Whenever you go to court, there's two attorneys, and one on this side and one on that side. So, and then someone have to make an opinion of who they believe is more believable, based on policy, procedures, comments, information, evidence, or whatever you wanna call it. So, that is where we are here tonight. And I am more than confident in our city attorney, in her opinion, as it relates to this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more person, um, via, um, Zoom, is Stacy Alessandro.
Okay.
In the public.
So, Ms. Stacy, name and address, please. Josh, is she good?
Um, I, Stacy Alessandro, 33, 9, 7, 4, 1, plus, I'll pick a class of my comments. Wanted to make sure that, um, sadly, uh, just we are, we call that there's a member of the council who has sent that comment that they want to be read. And then also, uh, I wanted to say that it's very, very difficult to hear this meeting right now outside of YouTube, but also, uh, within the city's limits, and, um, whatever I say, that whatever the opinion of the city attorney is, that's what you guys will listen to. We have a high in confidence, city attorney, legal repel, high in confidence. One of my... This is, um, I'm, I'm, I'm the attorney's confidence, but taking whatever her opinion is, and it's kinda hard to even know what it is, it's hard to hear, but I've made whatever her opinion is, I'd say so with that. And then my last comment is also, um, that regarding this faulty, I think the lack of communication, um, between the administration and the council members is astounding, which is probably creating a lot of these problems right now. I mean, it is astounding. So, it's actually what I said at the last meeting, the mayor only talked to one person on that report. And that's evident, I, what you guys are saying tonight. I think that needs to change. So, anyway, one of the favor, whatever the attorney represents, obviously, one of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Uh, Mr. Brown, put his hand back up. I don't think it could be here and before. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna allow him more time to finish, or you wanna?
I, I think he, 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 he finishes his statement. He, he had a three minutes. I think we're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on. So, uh, Madam Clerk, where are we? Just to bring us back?
You're in your public hearing.
Okay, so we're gonna vote to close the public hearing, correct? Uh, Councilman?
I, I know, I'd just like the council clerk, I understand we received correspondence via letter, and I ask, I'd like to ask her to read that as well, please.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Okay. Dear councilmembers, this is from Stephen Pettit, 4816 David Draw, Kenne, Louisiana. The last time I addressed this council, I mentioned the idea of legal representation for the council. As I'm sure my comments suggested, I fully support your endeavor to create the position you are contemplating. The position is not only very necessary, but long overdue. I hope that this council recognizes it's important to take all letters available to see its successful creation. Should you receive any resistance to this endeavor, you only, you need only remember that you need to explain the game like it would be played against you. Please remember, you are under no obligation to budget every penny in the budget, nor must you pass the administration's proposed budget. You can and should completely slash that budget to bare bone, so that the administration must continue for every penny that it wants to spend. Make the administration decide which of its high-paying jobs it wants to cut, or which salaries it wants to slash. If it puts up resistance to your desire to create one simple and necessary position to assist and represent you, you will be proud of it. This is exactly what would be done to you were the situation reversed. Also, I have a discussion of whether or not legal representation for the council is allowed by the state charter, by anything other than the city attorney's office. Whether or not this is accurate, again, please simply play the game like it would be played against you. Call the position the council a, and only hire someone who happens to be an attorney. I don't have any power to explain to you the basis for any opposition to this position, so I won't. However, I will say that I'm happy that you have seen the necessity for creation of this position, and I hope that you make every available option to make it sure it's successful. Play the game like it's played against you on a regular basis. Finally, if you decide to agree to the position, I have a very, very close relationship with an absolute best person you can hire.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we're gonna call the vote to close the public hearing. Is that where, that's where we at, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. That's where we are, voting to close. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Motion passes six, one, to close your hearing. Councilman Hayes is opposed.
So, are we moving now to the?
I need a motion in a second to put the ordinance on the floor for, um, discussion.
Motion by Councilman Wilmot, I'm, excuse me, by Councilwoman McKinney, second by Councilman Branigan, for mo- for discussion, for, on the amendment.
No, this is on the ordinance. We're putting it on the floor.
On the ordinance, on the ordinance, excuse me, on the ordinance. Council members, please vote.
No, you don't have to vote. You're just putting it on the floor. That's your motion. You're putting it on the floor. Now, you can take your discussion and amendments.
Okay. So, discussion, any council members? You gonna, you, you gonna read it, or?
I will be there. I have some questions from the amendment. Would you like to read it to the record? Okay, the First Amendment. I have received an amendment to add Section 3 to read as follows. Section 3, amendment to the 2021, 2022 operating budget to reallocate $638,251.61 from various accounts to the paid incentives accounts. The account will follow as listed. Salaries account number 0018089-5601 will increase by $638,251, $638,251.61. Shuttered venue grant account number 001320-4401 will increase by $38,000. Insurance premiums account number 0011581-5840 will decrease in the amount of $115,000. Use of excessive budget revenues will decrease by $485,251.61. I need a motion in a second on that amendment, please.
Motion by Councilwoman McKinney, second by Councilman Branigan. Council members, please vote.
I have some hands up for the amendment, to talk about the amendment.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Segura?
No, I, I just, um, I don't know what was just read, I guess, 'cause the paperwork that I received, I guess, right after the last meeting that proposed the ordinance, or the amendment to the other board to know if it's more racist, wasn't what she just read. So, I, I'm just saying I don't have what we've read that way.
Neither do I. Just anybody.
So, can you give, make a copy, or give Councilman Segura, and, uh, do you, would you like a copy?
Sir?
Yes, Councilman Hayes?
We're voting on the chair.
So, let me get a copy for them, Madam Clerk?
Yes, yes, sir. We got a friend right now.
So, do you?
Can I ask the CFO, did you send this to everybody in the council?
What, I'm not aware of what that is. If it was what the clerk read, that did not come from the CFO.
Yes, ma'am, it's what she read, evidently.
Yeah, that did not come from my office.
It didn't come from your office?
No, sir.
Where did this come from?
It came, it's on the box. When you print the four pages of the, uh, the meeting today, it was, uh, it was attached to that. There's four pages.
I was not sent that.
You didn't? You didn't, you didn't agenda for that?
No. I think what his question is, is who produced where it's coming from? Well, that's, that is.
And it didn't come from the CFO. So, we, we're, we're like you. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what y'all are looking at.
No, somebody said this did come from the CFO.
Maybe she needs to see it.
Would you like a copy, Ms. Foshee? Did you get a? I mean, would you like a copy?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, can you make another copy for the CFO, please?
This is pretty liminary. I mean, This is pretty liminary, I mean, nobody even knows where this came from?
It, it came, it was attached to the, it was attached to the agenda?
Well, the CFO, just for the administration's record, did not do it. So, if y'all didn't do it, and we didn't do it, who's, who's the magical person?
So, I got a copy of it, so I don't remember who did it, but I did get a copy.
See, that communication thing works both ways. We're not getting it either.
Yes, uh, Councilman McKenney?
Yes, Council President. I, I'd like to clarify, these amendments and all of the, the, uh, the numbers and all the terminologies, that actually came from an email for the proposed amendments from the mayor that, that was sent to us from CIO Foshee. All of the council members were copied on that, so every single council member should be familiar with that, because if they read the amendments that came from the CFO, the CIO, then that would, that's, it, it's, the terminology, there, all of the numbers and all of the information is verbatim from the information that was provided by the CIO.
Council President?
That's not on the agenda.
It's getting a little out of order, but I think it's because we're talking about two different documents.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Right.
If it came from the CFO, then everybody got it.
Council President, could you recognize Ms. Foshee in a moment?
Uh, yeah, I wanna make sure everybody has a copy.
Very important, what we just realized.
So, Madam Clerk, everyone has a, has a copy that you read?
We need to print a couple more, but we're working on it.
Okay, yeah. So, we're, we're getting a few more copies, so we won't have to, anybody say they don't have it?
Mr. Chairman? That's not what I said, this is what I said.
Mr. Detective, if you need to use a restroom, you know, you can raise your hand, it's fine.
I think the citizens should have a copy of that. What is in the post? I'd like, I'd like to have a copy, I would rather have one of those, you know? Thank you, though, I don't hate to use the restroom. Goodbye, goodbye, everybody else.
I believe everybody should have a copy of the amendments. If you don't, please speak now.
This is, this is mine. Do you have the other one prepared like this? Where are the two of us? Okay, this is the one that went today. But this went today. That's not the one that I have. No. Well, no, 'cause mine look like this. I don't know what that is, I've never seen that. I have no idea. Right, but this one, it's not attached anywhere.
No, it's not. And that's the one that's for the original budget, except it's on.
Madam Clerk, has everyone received?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, Ma'am, everyone's attention, we're gonna get started again, and Ms. Foshee has some comments. Uh, we're gonna ask Madam Clerk to read it again, but we're gonna let Ms. Foshee make a comment, and then we will read the amendment again.
Just a couple things, did the members, did the, Mr. Detective, the public get copies?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Detective, public get copies?
Not all of them.
Okay. So, just a, just a couple things. The, what's, what's noticed, what's advertised tonight is simply an agenda. There's none of the, these numbers attached, there's no numbers, right? The only ordinance in there is just a budget, there's no, there's no numbers attached. The, the information that I sent to council looked like this.
Could you please speak up?
I'm sorry, the information I sent to council looked like this, I mean, just formatting-wise, and this is what we're getting, so I can't verify, I don't know, we don't know where, what these numbers are. They're probably what she says they are, but we've never seen this before. So, as we sit here right now, we, we have some numbers, and this is, this is your amendment, but it's nothing the public has ever seen, and it's nothing that we have ever seen. So, they may be the same numbers, they may not, we don't know that. But at the, at the very least, this is not gonna meet the definition of a budget, because you don't have those numbers, like, the public has no idea. No idea what we're doing.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure I have any idea what you're doing, but the public definitely doesn't have any idea.
Yeah, all I'm gonna say is for, I've never submitted amendment, whenever we've done amendments, we've never given them out prior to us making the amendments. It happens during the course, so that is, that is pretty much, you know, the situation we've always adhered to. We made the amendments at the meeting, and, which means we never were able to give the public a, a copy of them.
Understood. Um, so, also, if, if I could, the additional information that needs to be included, please, will be, and I, you can probably do it after your second one, is the ending fund balance, um, expenditures by character, expenditures by function, and expenditures by department. We will need that as well, because you cannot create the budget without that. So, I'm not sure, maybe you have calculated that, Kristy, I have not. Maybe you've calculated the ending fund balance, so we will need that information to be able to make this adoption.
So, Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Can you, will you read, we're, we're still on the First Amendment. Everybody has a copy of both that we're gonna do. So, will you read the First Amendment over again?
Sure, I will. We will be adding a section three to read. Amendment to the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two operating budget to reallocate six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents from various accounts to the pay incentives account. The accounts that we will be, um, deleting and adding money to will be as follows. For the salaries account, zero-zero-one-eight-zero-eight-nine-dash-five-six-zero-one, we will increase that account number by six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. The shutter venue grant account number zero-zero-one-three-two-zero-dash-four-four-zero-one, we will increase that account by thirty-eight thousand dollars. Insurance premiums account number zero-zero-one-one-five-eight-one-dash-five-eight-four-zero, we will decrease that account number by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The use of excess, excess budgeted revenues will decrease by four hundred and eighty-thousand, eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
So, we are still in discussion, correct?
You're on your First Amendment, you're on discussion of your First Amendment. Councilman McKenney, add your hand up.
Councilman Segura was speaking first, so, Councilman Segura?
Yo, oh, thank you, Council President. Yeah, all I questioned was because what was read was not on this paper that I had received, uh, I guess, from Ms. Foshee, which was put out as we talked before. I just wanted to be clear that we're talking the same numbers, and I, I guess I'm hearing the numbers are the same, it's just maybe the formats were different. I, 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 you know, all we're trying to, I agree, I'm trying to do the raise, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's an honest, uh, request. So, we wanted to make sure you had the information and wasn't perceived that something was changing.
Well, I, like I said, the language as she was reading.
The language could have been a little different.
But the numbers are still good.
The numbers are still the same.
Can, Council President, can we know what this amendment's for? It's just numbers moving, nobody has said what it's for.
It's for the two percent raise.
I know, but nobody, but it doesn't say that.
Just to clarify, so, in the beginning of my, when I read it, I read out that section three would read, uh, this is an amendment to two thousand twenty-one slash two thousand twenty-two operating budget to reallocate six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents from various accounts to the pay incentives account. So, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, that, that's what I read, and we're getting everything.
You're good?
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't think the public knows what this is, when you just look at this. Maybe they do, but I wouldn't know if I just looked at this, that I, if I don't know these things, I don't know what it's for.
She just read it.
What, like, now?
Yeah.
This, this isn't a, this isn't a, we never, we never have them witnessed before.
We never give them out to the public, that I can remember ever being on a council.
We usually don't have this situation where there's a reconsideration of a budget. Usually amendments come from the administration, and they, our amendments are very clear what it's for. So, the amendments that we proposed are different to these amendments in verbiage.
Okay, so, Ms. Foshee?
The language, uh, in section three says that the money will be allocated from various accounts to the pay incentives account. There is nothing in this amendment that says anything about two percent raises, simply the money's being moved to the pay incentive account. So, I think it should be made clear that the purpose of this is to provide a two percent raise. That was the whole reason we did that, there's no reference to it in your amendment at all.
Okay, so we can, we can amend the amendment to include that verbiage? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I think it would be a safe thing to do, yes, sir. Councilman Carroll, if I might suggest just you clarify the amendment, rather than amending the amendment?
Okay, for clarification, Madam Clerk, will you clarify the amendment for everyone's sake?
You want me to read the amendment again, or would you?
Yes. Read it, read it, read it again, from the beginning.
Okay. Section three, to read, amendment to the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two operating budget to reallocate six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents from various accounts to the pay incentives account. And can we add for the two percent increase for civil service? Is that what we're trying to do?
I, I don't know if we were trying to do, we just wanted clarity to read.
For the two percent elective raise for civil service employees, police, fire, municipal.
I think that's, that clears it up for everyone.
Uh, Attorney, is there possibly a, uh, get with the assistant clerk, we could get that.
Sure, Ms. Timmy, I'd be happy to read it.
Okay, thank you. Just give us one moment, so we can.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna wait to tell you.
And Council Clerk, will you read it into the record?
And for clarity, correct? Yes. Take your time, Attorney, just, just get it in, we're gonna wait, we have nowhere to go, you know, to make sure we get it right, for clarity's sakes.
Okay, councilmembers. Section three will read, amendment to the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two operating budget to reallocate six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents from various accounts to the pay incentives accounts in order to give a two percent elective raise to civil servants, police, fire, and municipal employees only.
You may as well read the, read, read it all over again, just to make sure.
Okay, and the count, the account numbers will be salaries account number zero-zero-one-eight-zero-eight-nine-dash-five-six-zero-one will increase in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Shuttered venue grant account number zero-zero-one-three-two-zero-dash-four-four-zero-one will increase in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Insurance premiums, zero-zero-one-one-five-eight-one-dash-five-eight-four-zero will decrease in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Use of excess budgeted revenues will decrease in the amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just as support, can you ensure that everybody gets a copy of that tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would appreciate that. So, we're still in discussion, Councilman Hayes, did you, you have comments on this? Councilwoman McKenney? You don't? Councilman Wilmot, on the amendment? No, Councilman Brannigan? Councilman Brennan? Councilman Brennan?
Sure.
So now, Mayor Zahn, do you have any, any comments on Ms. Foshee on the amendment? Yeah, Amendment One, First Amendment.
I have no, is there anything else you want to add besides what we've already said to it? Oh, that would be after the second one. Oh, just to reiterate, after your Second Amendment, we're going to need the, also the calculations for the ending fund balance, expenditures by agency, expenditures by department, and expenditure, expenditures by function and character, the changes that have been made as a result of that. But that's after the second one, right.
So number one, are you, do you have any more?
If you stop now and decided not to do your second one and I didn't tell you that, I would be.
Hopefully I won't do that.
Okay.
So, or is there anyone in the public, since we're still in a public forum, who would like to speak on the First Amendment only? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Rory Belina, One Galleria Boulevard, Suite 1100, Metairie, Louisiana, 7001. I'd just like to clarify that the document that's been just now circulated to the public as well as to the administration is not the identical budget that was adopted on June 3rd. It's not the identical budget. To reiterate, there was $638,000 increase, a $38,000 increase, $115,000 decrease, and a $485,000 decrease. The clerks stated they are adding and deleting from various accounts. So this is not the identical budget that was adopted on June 3rd. These are material changes to the budget. It does not meet the definition of the budget. Under the Budget Act, proper notice has not been given to the public, and this is an improper format for amending the budget.
Thank you, sir. So, motion to close. Ms. Morella, name and address.
Al Morella, 4216, 10055, 492. I propose to this, and I'm gonna tell you something, the whole thing on this agenda, for this best of me, is reconsideration. Nothing happens. I'm opposed to it, and I think we, we are asking for the process back down. Now, hopefully I'll have to come back at another meeting and say I told myself. But what this is not on the agenda, none of this is on the agenda, just reconsideration. And I propose to anything being voted on here tonight, except reconsideration of that budget. And if the current falls to where it was on June 3rd, you folks adopt it. Anybody got any comments to reply to? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Councilwoman McKenney, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I guess I'd like to ask the city attorney to define what reconsideration is, which I know that's already been done again, but please define it, as well as inquire, and inquire about the, okay, just, I guess, clarify on what reconsideration is.
Okay, I'm just gonna read from your council rules because it's a very clear council rule. A vote or question on the main issue may be reconsidered at any time during the same meeting. A motion to reconsider must be made and seconded by members who voted on the prevailing side of the question to be reconsidered. Upon motion so made and seconded, a vote shall be taken without debate. If the motion passes, debate shall be reopened on the main issue. A motion for reconsideration, having once, having been once made and decided in the negative, shall not be renewed, nor shall a motion to reconsider be reconsidered. But I think what Mr. Rory and Mr. Morella are basically telling y'all is that you guys cannot amend this proposed budget from the floor, and that is not correct. You, by going down that road, I mean, it would, it would be that you could never amend an ordinance from the floor. And you guys do that all the time. This body does that all the time. That is all you all are doing, is amending the proposed budget. These amendments don't have to be published. You're not, I mean, it's not reading in summary. It is a, an amendment from the floor.
Thank you.
It's legal.
Councilwoman on the First Amendment? Do you have any comments?
The only thing on the First Amendment, I just wanted to say that, you know, obviously, the reason that we're, we are putting this amendment forth and the reason that, as I stated earlier, that we wanted to vote on this today is so we can get these raises into the hands of the employees who deserve this as more than anything. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Councilman Brennan on the First Amendment?
Yes, thank you. I, I, I guess, so Ms. Roussel, again, your, your opinion is we're doing everything okay. This isn't any different than a change we make at a normal meeting. If it's something from the floor, that that's not necessarily publicized. I, I guess my other question, and I'll, and I'll just make a comment, is I'm wondering, when we have city attorneys, why do we have another law firm here? And is it just, to me, what doubt are we casting on our, our city attorneys by having another law firm here, and they're a fine law firm, I know many of the people that work there? And I, I, that just kind of befuddles me. And to keep falling back on someone else's opinion when we have many city attorneys and assistant attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, to close the public hearing.
No, we're on the First Amendment. No more discussion on the First Amendment than we're voting.
Okay, there is no more discussion on the First Amendment.
I'm sorry, Stacy Alessandro with my. She just raised her hand and the zoom.
Okay, it's, it's, okay, Ms. Stacy, name and address. Sorry about that. I obviously didn't know you were wanting to speak. Name and address?
Thank you, Council President. Again, Stacy Alessandro, 3309, Galleria Boulevard. Since this is a separate comment area, I would just like to once again reiterate my comments that we have a highly capable, highly competent city attorney, Ms. Roussel, and I would advise the council to listen to what she says. She is a city attorney, and I would listen to whatever she advises we got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So. Madam Clerk, we are voting to adopt the amendment, First Amendment. Just for clarity. Council members, please vote to adopt, adopt the First Amendment. Council members, please vote. Yes.
Council Kenny?
Yes.
Council Wilmot?
Yes.
Council Carroll?
Yes.
Council Ms. Yor?
Yes.
Council Hayes?
Yes.
Council Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. The clerk has received the Second Amendment that I would like to read into the record at this time, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Second Amendment. Will be read in Section Four. Section Four will read. Amendment to the 2021-2022 operating budget to reallocate $177,138 from various accounts to the council salary investment accounts to fund assistant clerk slash research and budget analyst. The accounts are as follows. will increase by $129,530. will increase by $38,211.35. Health insurance, 001-1100-5612 will increase by $6,555.38. Life insurance, 001-1100-5613 will increase by $962.93. will increase by $1,878.19. Non-fire overtime, 001-8089-5603 will increase by $13,018.58. Salaries, 001-1900-5601 will decrease by the amount of $41,379. Retirement, 001-1900-5611 will decrease by $12,206,81. Health insurance, 001-1900-5612 will decrease by the amount of $6,555.38. Life insurance, 001-1900-5613 will decrease by the amount of $307,61. Medicare, 001-1900-5614 will decrease by $600. will decrease by $40,996. Retirement, 001-8088-5611 will decrease by $12,348.2. Health insurance, 001-8088-5612 will decrease by $6,555.38. Life insurance, 001-8088-5613 will decrease by $303.28. Medicare, account number 001-8088-5614 will decrease in the amount of $591.54. Salaries, account number 001-8083-5601 will decrease by the amount of $47,285. Retirement, 001-8083-5611 will decrease by $13,949.8. Health insurance, 001-8083-5612 will decrease by $6,555.38. Life insurance, 001-8083-5613 will decrease by $351.52. Medicare, 001-8083-5614 will decrease in the amount of $685,63. If I could get a motion in a second, I'll add amendment as ready to the record.
Motion. Sorry about that. Motion by Councilman Branigan, second by Councilwoman McKenney. Council members, please vote.
Council McKenney? Yes. Oh, sorry. Council Ms. Yor, would you like to speak? I apologize. I didn't see your hand. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that, Councilman. Councilman Segura?
Just a comment on this is that this council, as I've heard plenty of times, say that we need this. It was funded once before for several years, but no one was ever hired at a lower rate. So now we're going to put it back into a funding that probably will close to double the amount. And obviously, that probably will entice some other people to be interested. But in reality, the only work for the budget analysis person is from May, around May 1st through June, when you receive the budget from the administration. And I just think like, for this amount of money, we could hire just a consultant for a 30-day period to review the budget at considerably less. I'm thinking maybe like $10,000 for a 30-day contract with a consultant to go over the budget that has been presented to the council and give us some insight. So I, I, I just baffled at this amount of money for this position. The other consideration was, I, through some correspondence, saw discussion about a different funding structure. I'm not sure how to phrase that. That, that was presented to Councilwoman McKenney, and I understand she said, no, let's go with this. But there was, the administration perhaps had questions about removing some secretarial positions that were probably needed backup. So I'm not sure why that was not considered to help if you're gonna fund this, fund this, et cetera. But Ms. Foshee's not here, so I guess I don't have the answer to get to it. Oh, Ms. Liz, do you have that answer?
So originally, when we were approached, we were given a list of positions and a list of ones from Councilman Branigan and Councilwoman McKenney. So we worked on those figures and worked with them on possibly eliminating other positions, not the ones they identified. So we did present, I think Ms. Foshee sent it out to everyone, and altered it. Instead of removing some of these positions, we had another option that actually added money to your fund balance. I don't know if Ms. Foshee wants to.
Sorry, in our, in our routine time to run out. So instead of eliminating the videographer in KTV and having to add overtime to cover that loss because there's no one else who can pick up and cover, we're proposing transferring the secretary from the IT department to the community development department as a program coordinator and defunding a recently retired clerk three position in the code department. Both positions have others within the city who are able to assist. The program coordinator one position is completely grant-funded, so there's no increase in expenses to that department. Budget, making these changes would add $35,803.98 to your fund balance.
Thank you, Ms. Foshee. Councilman Segura?
Okay, well then, again, my question, I'm not sure who to send it to. Ms. McKenney seems to be the one at that was addressed. Is that something that's not acceptable, more so than what, wait, I'm asking you. Oh, okay. You're looking away from me. I didn't know you needed something else. Okay, is there a reason why you're pushing for these numbers versus those numbers?
Yes, so, yes, Councilman Segura, in answer to that question, I think you need to look at, we really targeted positions that don't exist. So we want to target positions that don't exist and that at a lower rate. If we eliminate those positions, it'll, it's gonna save retirement, health insurance, life insurance, medical insurance, or Medicare in the long run. So while we save, you know, 80, 30, 80, and by the way, I did give that amendment at 3 o'clock today. So, you know, I didn't have real time to specifically look at it. But I, but like I said, we, we're not, we feel, feel, or at least I, and I don't know what my colleagues feel, we feel that a limit, creating a position, a new position, that is, that is unnecessary. We feel it's unnecessary position. If you add up that total, that $68,000 that we can save in perpetuity in the future by not hiring that person, compared to that $13,000 of overtime just for this one year, right? It's my understanding from what Ms. Foshee said that previously had someone in the KTV media department that could act as an extra videographer. So we don't feel that this is necessary, and we want, we really want to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. That's why.
So the, the number that was just said about putting back into the general fund instead of taking out, that's not good stewards either?
Well, that's one, that's a one time scenario. This, if you, if you continue to keep this funded, you're, you're, I mean, unless we're gonna fire this videographer next year, then in perpetuity, they're gonna get raises, they're gonna get additional expenses. So that is gonna continue to grow. So like if you, you know, you're paying a certain amount, and if you get raises every year, then that city is obligated to pay you every, we're not gonna save $38,000 every, every single year. We're incurring this in perpetuity if we don't eliminate this position.
Would it be also fair to assume that if this person who's hired at this rate of pay will also be receiving raises also? Or we're not gonna, if they were hired at this rate of pay, never get another raise?
No, I'm saying they will, so that's gonna add to additional tax burden for taxpayers in the future.
Well, that's what I just asked. This person, this budget research analysis will continue to add to the funds that the city receives every year to pay that salary as well as raises.
Yes, as long as that person is hired, yes.
Okay. As I said, I just don't think this is a position that is. Okay. As I said, I just don't think this is a position that is needed on a full-time annual basis when we only see the budget from around May to June. And it's easy to hire some CPA firm that could come in and dwell into this and give us the advice that we are thinking we need and do that with them, that thirty-day period for a whole lot less money, that to be as better stewardship for our money. And then we've heard a lot of discussion tonight about various attorneys and their opinions. And here, we're looking to insert this potential slash attorney to give us information that we've all said, we trust our city attorney. So why are we now gonna want someone else telling us something that's gonna potentially be in contrast to what the city attorney is telling us, and then we've got to sit there and see who do we believe? So that's why I'm not in favor of this position.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hayes.
I agree with everything you said, and I just can't imagine tonight having another attorney that we should be listening to. And I've said at the last meeting, I'm gonna vote against this, this is not the best use of taxpayer's money. You're paying somebody a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to work, I guess, just during the budget process. Don't know what this person's gonna do, other than that, has not been explained to me. This is not the best use of funds. I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Brannigan.
Well, I'm voting yes for this, and I think, I think that we need this person. And if you look at the job description, the attorney was taken out of the job description, so you don't get to tell this all over again. Probably, might be, might not be attorney, could be. Might be that for my money, when you look at how much the budget has gone up in the city of Kinnon the last five years, it's gone from sixty billion to seventy-three billion dollars. And there are a lot of people making a hundred and seventy-seven thousand with benefits. Councilman Hayes, salary is set one twenty-nine, five thirty or three fifty. And basically, you keep throwing out that one seventy-seven now. But when you look at all the raises that were proposed in this budget, no one ever put the thirty-seven percent on top of it for the benefits. So I'm voting for this position. I think that the council needs this position, it's been advanced budgets. Why they need to fill, who knows? That's not my problem. And if you don't think that you need this person, then don't use it.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Wilma, you have any comments, sir?
Yeah, and just to reiterate what my colleague just said, George. You know, you mentioned a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and how many jobs do we have in the city right now that are close to that thing? It's not just one or two, there's multiple jobs, number one, that have packaged to that extent with a retirement. I got a problem with that. I mean, we got retirements out there, they're gonna be through the roof. And this is gonna be a problem, it falls on the city council for budgetary issues. We're looking at ten years from now, what kind of retirements are we gonna have? This is scary to me. All these are scary. I just got a problem with it. Now, this particular position, I think it's needed because we need to be able to interpret what's thrown at us in a budgetary process. This budget is just unbelievable. We here are not CPAs, but we can use somebody who can help us interpret this a lot better. Have an analysis person, thank goodness we have at least one who handles budgets. That's important, that's great when it comes time to budgets. I'd like to see somebody on the city, next to the city council, have a position, who can help us. No question about it, I watch my colleagues flying all over the place, trying to do things and work with the administration. And I see the administration working hard too, but we gotta feel comfortable on how we vote. And this person is key, so I'm gonna support it definitely. A hundred and seventy-seven thousand, again, that's the, that's the maximum amount. It's not necessarily we're gonna hire the person at, it might be ninety thousand, might be seventy-five thousand. It all depends on the person and what they got to offer us, that's yet to come, so, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. So I want to go over some of the details, you know, I was, I assisted with the work even in creating this. So as Councilman Brannigan said, this has already been, this was previously approved, added and approved in a previous budget. In the two thousand eight and two thousand nine budget, the budget was approved with this position in it as seven oh. The council, so the council went through, they actually went through, the previous council went through the entire process to interview and select a person. But it never entered the portion, and the position remained in the budget until 2016. So all of those people on the city council, the year of 2018, or two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen, through all of those times, which the mayor was actually part of the councils, approved the budget as is with this position in it. So, you know, the mayor's not here, but obviously, at the time, when he was on the council, he saw a need for it. So I think that that's telling. You know, I also think that it's important to point out the intention, and so we, it's an assistant clerk, a researcher budget analyst. Under the civil service rules and the home charter, the council clerk is allowed to hire up to five assistants. She only has one at this time. So this person will be supervised by the council clerk and fall under, fall under her supervision. So we can hire, if we chose to, a person who focuses wholly on budgets, a person who focuses wholly on research. We are trying to be good stewards in hiring one person with both expertise. So I'm not sure, like, at the last meeting I mentioned, we want someone who has the experience of the CFO and the experience of the city attorney. So someone who can advise us on legal manners, not, not, that was what we said, not misrepresent as a city attorney, but advise us, help us do legal research, help us make sure, you know, sometimes when we reached out to the city attorney's office before, and I have, we base this with legislation, and it doesn't come with it. So we wanna make, you know, we, this person will help us with that. This person will not just work on budgets for the sixty days of the budget process. They will help us monitor it, we get reports every, every month on the status of the budget to reflect and to compare. That person will be able to read, interpret, and explain that to all of the members who don't have budget expertise. I do not intend to be the councilperson to do budget announcements in perpetuity for the rest of my life. And I'm terminated as well. So my expertise is limited. So having this person in there is important as a resource for all of the council members. And like I said, they're not gonna just be sitting around during the week or during the rest of the time. They're gonna be active and assistant, as I mentioned before. Like, you know, there are, when I sent, when I got email and I requested this information during the very busy time, the CFO wasn't able to, or any director was not able to, I was not able to contact them. So this person will be able to contact and get that information before the very busy, very busy time of the budget process. So we will be fully, we will be as fully prepared or more fully prepared for the budget process so we can have successful back and forth and provide for that information. I think this is a very integral position. They have the positions in, they have the positions in Orleans Parish, they have positions in Jefferson Parish that are similar. They have, in Jefferson Parish, they have three people, they're budget spitter. That makes sense? I would never found that we would need three people to handle this new town. But in order for us to effectively legislate and be oversight, this position is gonna add an immense value to the, to our, you know, our ability to be more effective. And as I said, I think that if we, if we don't add this person, you know, there's gonna be less information that's, less information that's available to us. But I also think it's interesting that the people who barely asked any questions at the budget hearing are the ones who are against this budget position. If they, you know, I think everyone, all, every single one of us is, has to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. And we, every single one of us should be asking questions, but that didn't happen, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Brannigan or Brennan, any comments?
That's right.
Councilman Wilma, you have another comment?
I have a question for the administration. Earlier, it was mentioned that the supervisory raises would not go through if we proceeded on course. I have to go through. Is that still old true?
Well, I know you're gonna ask the lawyer, so I'm just the CEO. However, you and I have had this conversation more than anyone else, and that is, the charter says that in a special, you cannot have, you can't adopt those in a special meeting, right? They have to be at a regularly scheduled meeting. Our conversation has always been, is having it in the budget at a regularly scheduled meeting adequate? And I know you've got some concerns about that.
That's right.
I think, and again, I'm relying upon the advice of the city attorney, that having it in the budget at a regularly scheduled meeting is fine. I am very concerned that you're attempting to adopt raises, the two percent, the three percent that's are in there for the supervisory personnel at a special meeting, again. I think it's, I think what you're doing is taking those away, but, you know, well, I hope not, but I think that's probably the case. Which is why we also need those adjustments for the budgets so we can create a total budget for you.
I just want your view.
My view is, I'm a legal opinion, to be very clear about that, you need to talk to the attorneys about their legal opinion on that.
Okay.
We finished that.
If you will, could you?
I disagree, respectfully disagree with this motion. As I have said numerous times this evening, the proposed budget had those raises in them. You guys have, you know, put that ordinance on the floor, you're debating it, you are passing amendments to that budget, and the budget will be adopted as amended with those raises in it. I think that the fact that this is happening at a special council meeting is permissible because you can reconsider any ordinance at the first regular or special meeting. So that's the procedure you're following, it is legal, it's legitimate, and those raises, in my opinion, will be, you know, in the budget that's adopted tonight. And, you know, unless, unless the city attorney is gonna be challenged and accorded law, and a judge is going to order that those raises are not effective, I mean, that's my legal opinion. It's always gonna be my legal opinion. Reconsideration is just a procedural way in which you guys can adopt these amendments tonight and have them go into effect this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney. Marizan?
Maybe this will help clear up a little bit. You wanna go first? Go ahead.
Can I just make the pitch again for the, you know, seven hundred employees we have, not singling the one out that we, we do need? And I know you believe we don't need it simply because it's new, Councilwoman, but we had three videographers before, we now have two. We've proposed the same amount of money, which is replicable, all of these salaries are the same or they're going to increase at the same rate, that we are actually taking people who have backup, by eliminating this position, you are taking people who don't have backup. That guy right there will be working overtime because there is no backup. Previously had three, now have two. A whole, and there would be no way for you to know without asking which ones were available. You didn't know we had someone retiring in code, right? You didn't know that there was a position that we could transfer from IT to community development. There's no way for you to know that by just looking simply at the budget. But again, had you asked, could we provide you with that funding and eliminate the best possible position? We clearly could have and would have done that by singling out a position that we need and that hampers hours later to perform. When we have so many others up, you know, I would encourage you to use the alternative proposal so that KTV is not hampered and we have the money provided to you for your use from positions that are actually have redundancies in those positions.
Thank you, Mayor. Marizan?
I'll make it very clear, I'm not gonna accept an invalid budget. So whatever you're doing here tonight, I will have to come back with amendments for you to accept. Two percent raise for our employees. That's what I, that's what I'm on the record for since getting this meeting. That's what I agreed to at the last council meeting, and here we are, almost three hours later, still discussing something that I'm not gonna accept. So you cannot compel me to accept an invalid budget. I'm listening, look, y'all wanna listen to our legal team, that's great, I usually do. But there's enough input from others this time that I think we have to come to some type of agreement tonight.
Thank you, Marizan, and is your prerogative to say you will not accept the raises for the employees? It is your...
Not what I said, not what I said.
So...
Not what I said, please, very good relationship, don't move words, move on, that's all.
No, no, well, I'm trying to get clarity.
Let me clarify it for you then.
Okay.
I'm not gonna accept an invalid budget. I will come back with amendments, an amendment for our two percent raise for our employees and make sure they don't pay this price of a council doing something that's invalid. That's not what I said.
Well, your opinion is, what we're doing is invalid.
I think my opinion is based on a lot of testimonies here tonight and also public input here tonight that is not happy with not seeing what was not submitted. Our budget was submitted, our budget was submitted on May first. Our budget was amended throughout that time, and we kept giving you something, that's true. But we've been through this, I think Lee said it best, this is our third public hearing of this. So we've already been through this part, I'm not gonna do something that jeopardizes everyone else because of what y'all are doing here tonight, what y'all possibly might do here tonight. I'm not saying you're gonna do it, what you possibly might do here tonight. I cannot, I cannot, as the administrator of the city, do something that's gonna be an invalid budget. And what we still have questions because...
In your opinion, in your opinion?
Absolutely, but not to hurt, but not to hurt anybody with raises.
All right.
I've been accused, look, since before the budget, I've been accused of a person who doesn't want to raise people, that is so far from the truth. I'm the one that sat here for police and fought for a funding struggle. Told y'all you should do a funding source for police and fire. I'm the one that has made sure that police were put in along with fire. When I was presented this by Christie and George, you did not hear police and fire, did you? But yet, I'm the one that doesn't wanna do raises supposedly by the police department, by the fire department, by civil servants. I'm here on record tonight, and that's why I'm taking offense to how you reworded it, my words. I am absolutely gonna come back with a two percent amendment. Y'all gonna have to figure, or y'all gonna vote against it. You're gonna have an amendment, y'all gonna have to choose whether or not you vote against it in gelatin. Y'all make that choice. This mayor's not voting against the people, this mayor wanted to include police and fire. George and Christie, y'all know y'all are gonna get police and fire included when you've sat with us in French press hours, though. And when I asked, you said, "We're not worried about that." The civil service are the one, the civil service are the one outside sweating. I said, "The police are putting their lousy lawn, and the firemen are doing what they do. They're taking, they're gonna destroy our property so well." There's text messages that say, "Take police out." I'll go that far, and that's it. So George, watch what you say, 'cause I'll go that far. There's text messages to my CEO that says, "Take police out." There's text, that's back from my CEO that says...
So really, so, really, let's just stick with it.
The mayor, well, it's, it's not the wood when you say that I'm gonna not acknowledge the raises.
Okay, well, I, I wanted clarity to know that we're gonna either approve or not.
I'm for raises for everybody, I'm for raises for everybody, as per my five percent, my potential five percent, you give two percent or three percent, through Maryland. I'm also for the two percent that I was approached with, but I'm for the two percent for police and fire, like it's in there, as per my request that it's in there. But I'm not gonna do it invalid, I'm not gonna do anything that gets challenged by people behind me that takes that two percent away from all of our civil servants, from our police and fire. What y'all are doing tonight is making a possibility to take it away from our civil servants. So therefore, I'm going to, y'all would have a lot better to leave my amendments on in first reading because y'all will vote on it next Friday. Now I have to submit it for next Friday, amend it, and they have to wait because of this council, they're gonna have to wait a couple of days. They're going to have to wait a couple of days to see that two percent increase. But y'all make your choice tonight, because I'm telling you right now, no communication? Is that what y'all want to say? There's no communication for this, for this administration? Here's the communication. You're, you are making sure that the people that work for this city do not get that two percent on July first. Because I'm going to make sure they get it, but they're going to get it the proper way. So chief, make sure when you leave here tonight, you, you deliver that message correctly. Chief of the fire department, make sure you deliver that message correctly. The people sitting behind me that work for me, appointed, make sure you, you deliver that message to your civil servants. It's not the mayor and his administration. You are going to cause the people not to see that raise on July first if you vote for this tonight. I'm asking not to do an invalid budget.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. Thank everyone for their comments. For clarity, it is the mayor's opinion what we're doing is incorrect. Not, he's not an attorney. We got the opinion from the attorney. So it is just his opinion and his opinion only. It was a lot of people opinion, their opinion only. We as a council will either vote for it or vote against it. What the mayor decides to do will be his, will be his prerogative to do that as well. We as a council are obviously for the firemen, policemen, and employees. So we don't want to, we don't want to even, even be perceived that we're not. This is our vehicle that we believe is the way to do it. You're either going to support it or you're not going to support it. And everybody up here has it and has that opinion, that responsibility to vote what they feel is correct. And we are getting ready, well, there are some, there are some, Ms. Foché, are you, you have something to say?
I'm just doing my broken record thing. Um, when you adopt it, please include the ending fund balance, expenditures by agency, expenditures by department, expenditures by function, and expenditures by character. Uh, actually, you don't need agency. Agency's fine. We have the beginning fund balance. We have the agency. The rest of those things I will need based upon the amendments.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brannigan?
Okay, uh, y'all seem to have a fetish for this videographer. And when we add the video, when we add the, that videographer, uh, when that person, if that person gets hired, it costs, uh, $64,000 with that. You say that we lost a videographer, okay? So we had a director that was in place and is that, that's the videographer that we lost?
Yes, sir, that's correct. He was actually qualified. The new director is not, does not have that skill set. She has many other things, though.
Okay, but we're paying that new director, the same thing that we paid the old director, and she doesn't have the skill set that the old director had.
The old director was using that as a side. The director is not required to have that requirement. And we did not want to tell Charles, I'm sorry, but we're not going to let you be promoted. Charles is going to a position that I think he's going to be superb at.
I don't think he's going to do burden.
Right, so I, I couldn't tell him, I'm sorry, you can't go because we don't actually have a director who's not only just a director but a videographer. I guess what I'm trying to say is we have actual positions that are easy. There are easy positions and there's this hard position. And the easy ones give you more money.
Well?
More money.
As I said in the budget meetings, uh, the new director has some really, really big shoes to fill. And, uh, when you look at the numbers of new position and how much it costs with benefits versus $13,000, $64,780 versus $13,600.
There's a person attached to that, George. There's a human being who's going to be told, I'm sorry, you can't go home and be with your toddlers because?
Is this a new position?
No, sir. It is a new position to replace the videographer so we do not have to have both of our videographers working overtime. We had three before, we now have two. We need three. How many of you guys were in P S As while we were doing COVID? I mean, I, I saw a bunch of you in there. These guys cannot be in every place at once. So that is a position we need, which, again, if we were just having a conversation, do you need a videographer, do you need a videographer, videographer or not? That'd be one thing, but we're not. We're having a question of how to get money for your position. And I have another way to get money for your position that doesn't harm any employees. It doesn't require any employees to work harder than they need to. It doesn't create stress on any employees. It actually creates, it allows you to have more money than you're generating now and it allows us to create posi, to reposition employees so that they are moving into positions where there's help. We have, I don't know, 100 maybe, secretaries. If you move a secretary, there's people, I could come to your floor and borrow somebody who would help me. There's lovely people on your floor who would help. But I can't come up there and say, hey, could one of you come and be a videographer? Because they can't. So I'm just asking that you trust us enough to know which positions we actually need and which ones we don't, particularly if the whole point of this wasn't just to say we think it's a bad idea to have a videographer. The point of this was we need $177,000 from somewhere. We found you more than that, but please let us make that choice for, for the employees.
Okay, uh, in regards to the mayor's comments about police and fire, when Christie and I went and met with you guys, we were trying to raise civil service, the lowest paid people, the backbone of our city employees, waitress. When you brought up police and fire, we didn't say, don't do it. I did text saying, take police out after I talked to the chief and told him what I was trying to do and what we were trying to do. And I take offense to you saying what you said. And I'm going to tell you, we were not, the fire department gets air raised every year. We weren't trying to shortchange anybody. The police department was getting raised this year. I explained that to the chief and he totally agreed with where we were.
Can I just clarify, because I do have a liaison position that has a totally different story? My liaison called me and Deputy CEO Chad Pittfield. We met. Legal department can, can say this because they didn't, one of them didn't recognize who we were. I don't know why not. At the restaurant, we were told by a liaison that the chief of police was very annoyed that the raise was not in there and he thought it was my fault. I sent my liaison back and I hate to put a civil servant in this position, but he is acting liaison. He went back and delivered the message. So look, I know what I heard at French press. I know when I brought it up, I was told, no, we, we're worried about these. I had to say, our police department is one of the lowest paid police departments in the state. After I made that comment, after I was told that civil servants sweat more in the heat than our police, basically, that's what was insinuated, I said, our police department is the lowest paid. George, I have a very good memory. My police department is the lowest paid in the state? That's when y'all came back and said, we'll figure that in and see how it works. Then the text messages, I wasn't told that the chief of police said anything, but, but Ben Zahn did not want to put him in. That is far from the truth. And my liaison should be here tonight. I don't know where, where he is, but he should be here tonight because he can take the podium right there and tell the story from the chief of police, or we have our chief of police here to do it.
So I, I don't, I don't think we're going to go there. I think?
Well, I mean, don't, don't accuse me of something.
I'm not, I'm not accused. All I'm saying is?
I'm directing it to him.
Can you?
I want to hear from the chief of police.
All right, I'd rather not go there. I'd rather you to close what you have to say so we can let Councilman Brennan, so we?
I don't want to hear from the chief of police.
I don't, I can't make, I can't?
I want to hear from my liaison.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I, I can't make the chief speak, but we're talking on the second, we're not talking about what the chief heard or what was said. That's what we're doing right now if the chief says something. We're not doing that. We're on the Second Amendment. Talk to the Second Amendment. As far as what the chief said, you can go ask him after. But for right now, we don't want to go either from the mayor or anybody to say what someone said. You can disagree with it and please do if you feel like it, but we just opened up a candle word. We don't want to do that. We just want to address the amendment, call it to the vote, and let that go. So it's not going to change, it's not going to change what you feel or what the mayor says that he believed he heard. It's not going to change anything. So it doesn't make sense to bring?
Yeah, it was, it was two people that heard it, my deputy CEO also.
Yeah, so it's not, we're not going to bring in hearsay. And that's exact, I'm not an attorney, but that's what we're doing. So please, Councilman, close.
Okay, the bottom line was, uh, once we met with the administration and got all of that resolved, everyone was taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, the chair is requesting to speak. He's trying to get my attention because I have to be ready now.
Okay.
Just let me know if it's all right.
Okay.
Chief? No, just to know if you want to let me speak on it, being that you're, something else off, this is unrelated to, I guess, the, the article or agenda that we have here, the amendment. But, uh, I guess the morning, before the morning of the last council meeting, I did receive a call from Councilman Brannigan talking about an additional two percent raise that some of the council members were proposing. Uh, couldn't, I guess, initially guarantee if you didn't know what the monies were available. So he, his first question, maybe what's the lowest paid policeman you had? And I said, they make $20,000. It's not policeman, it's a custodian. And they make $20,000 a year starting pay. Uh, so he pitched his idea of trying to give a additional two percent raise on top of the administration's raise for the lowest paid, uh, people. I didn't know the numbers. He didn't know about the time, I don't think, if, if there was enough money or they identified unfilled positions. So a couple of minutes or probably half hour, hour went back, called me back, we discussed a little bit more. And I said, approve the police budget as it's submitted. I said, take police out and see what numbers you have there. And that was it. That was the last of that. Two o'clock, I think, I get a phone call, police are back in. That was my only input in the police budget, this whole entire process, other than what I submitted to the administration for consideration. Uh, we are one of the highest paid police departments in the, in the state of Louisiana. Uh, and we will be, I mean, state police is always going to give us one for a money with, you know, with pay and, you know, given our, coming to our police department pretty much poaching the best of the best. So that's what we're dealing with today. Uh, and yes, I will say I talked to Councilman Brannigan and told him to leave police out and just approve the police budget as it was submitted. That's how I conversation went.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, both comments. Councilman Brennan, Brannigan?
And, and chief, I think you were happy that I called you back and said the dumbest word ever, uh, because Liz is definitely crunching numbers off there.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarity, chief. Thank you, Council, Councilman Brennan?
I'm good.
Okay, so? Councilman Wilmore?
I know the, the mayor indicated that, that it looks like he's not going forward, I guess, with, with the pay raises, even if we vote on it tonight, we, everything's approved and the amendments are approved. It sounds like July first, the two percent apparently we might bring forward. Okay, well, whatever you indicated, you said you're going to wait until the next meeting to confirm and do an amendment, uh, propose your own amendment to reconsider apparently or reurge another type of, uh, clarification. That's what it sounded like to me. But from what I understand, what we're doing tonight by our city attorney, it's legal and July first, is it not correct that you can go forward? It's not even, it's a word you, it's not even, we can go forward, but in July first, correct? He could make those, the pay raises that we have in our budget, amendments in July.
Well, some of the pay raises have to go before the civil, respective civil service boards for approval first. So, um, you know, any involving municipal civil service, any involving, for the fire civil service, would have to be approved first by those board commissions. And I'm sure the administration's already, you know, scheduling those meetings, you know, and getting with those respective, uh, boards to get that done. So, um, I, I don't want to speak for the mayor. I don't know what, you know, he means. I think what he's saying is that he, his position is similar or, or is identical to his attorney's, um, that he retained, uh, their position that, um, that this is going to be an invalid budget because you all are doing it procedurally incorrect. And I'm telling you that you are not doing it procedurally incorrect. My legal opinion is, the legal opinion of my office is, not just mine, of my office, is that this is procedurally correct and you have a budget that's adopted as amended to.
And he can go forward with that amendment in favor?
Yes. Once they get approved by the civil service board, yes, they're all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Councilman Wilmore. Madam Clerk, so we are calling the vote, correct?
You are voting on the, you are voting on the Second Amendment as the third running to the record, yes.
So council members?
Is this just amendments? Your cell phone, the law just hasn't been, so maybe you can do that one?
So on the amendment, on the Second Amendment, we are calling for a vote. Council members, please vote on the second budget amendment.
Councilman Penny?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmore?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Stewart?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Braden?
Yes.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Motion passes by to council members, Superdor and Hayes are opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So Ms. Foché, your comments or?
timely, timely.
timely, timely.
We're about to adopt our budget as amended in order to have a budget in compliance with the Budget Act. We will need to include, we have the beginning fund balance, we have the beginning fund balance, um, we have the expenditures by agency, we have the expenditures by department, expenditures by function, and expenditures by character numbers to include in the budget.
Is that, is that something have to be said or written in tonight or is there something?
I am told it has to be written in tonight. You have to adopt a budget. You're not adopting an amendment. You're adopting a budget.
So?
And a budget under Louisiana Government Budget Act, I am told by the legislative auditor and by, yes, these other attorneys, that must include that. So legislative auditor, I mean, again, not, not vampire attorneys. You are, you have a get out of jail free card, okay? If it turns out this was wrong, you're not going to sue, right? Because you rely upon good faith advice of council. But that doesn't mean legislative auditor has to follow that. So I'm asking you, please, to include the actual total amount of information that's required to be in a budget for you to adopt it. It doesn't have to be an amendment to be in the budget. And those numbers have changed because of the amendments that you have made.
So, uh, Attorney Russell, your, your comments on Ms. Foché's comments to not amend, but to add language?
Yes, sir. I have a solution to propose.
Just here?
I mean, I'm assuming that these calculations have not been made by the CFO. So I believe that you can make an amendment that directs or instructs the interim CFO to make whatever adjustments are necessary to carry this budget into effect. So, um, you know, I, I don't believe that Liz was sitting here while we were in this meeting crunching numbers, but I think that that amendment would cover you. Uh, those adjustments can be made tomorrow or the next day. Um, to, to think that y'all have to have this, uh, budget book down to the penny tonight is, I don't believe that that's correct. I think that if you do amendment to instruct the CFO to make whatever adjustments are necessary to carry into effect, you know, this amended budget, I think that that would suffice.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, I'd like to get the burdens, just to make sure we got it correct, if Attorney Russell can share it with Madam Clerk so we can read it in as So Madam Clerk, we're going to have another amendment that has to be put on the floor to be voted on.
Council members, as with...
Yes, sir.
So...
So we will be adding a section five.
As an amendment.
As an amendment. And the section five will read that the interim CFO is instructed to make all necessary schedule changes to the budget as amended.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have to vote again.
That, we need a votes for a second for this amendment.
Okay.
As well as to the record.
Motion by Councilman Brannigan, second by Councilwoman McKinney, for the amendment. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Wilman?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Stewart?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. So, it doesn't look like I see anything else.
You're back to your ordinance as amended.
As amended, as amended. Back to the audit. As council members, please vote.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Stewart?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman Wilman?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That will conclude. I'll have to get a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, second by Councilman Brennan to adjourn. Council members?